To call at one of this meeting of Hancock County Commissioners.
On our move to adopt the agendas published.
Uh, just a second. Tim, did you have a request this morning?
Yes, just to be able to accept a resignation for correction's office.
Did you understand that they couldn't?
I read it, but I. I mean, if they chartered and it seemed like something that could go on the next agenda is why I.
Is there an urgency, Tim?
I was just gonna try and wrap that with end of the month. I thought the, um. Finance suggested he, we were just looking for an answer, we were just gonna cancel it, so, when the termination would be accepted.
This is kind of a neat issue to talk about, Tim.
I mean, does HR need to review this, is that a reason?
I mean, HR hasn't been in the office. Family. They haven't had a chance to have a conversation with them yet, so.
Are you familiar with it?
A little bit, yeah.
Should it be heard today?
I mean, I think the issue did that to extend it today is more tied to when the benefits would be when finance is looking to determine when benefits would be terminated, but if the employees already get kicked out, I'm not sure.
And I think that's an issue, Commissioner, to get to explore whether or not. Well, we need to discuss this.
But I, how are you going to discuss whether the employees done it or not?
Yeah, under what situation is Tim telling us that he's under the pressure to do it?
I think you're getting in dicey territory of personnel stuff, but.
I'm just not comfortable with this, it hasn't been reviewed.
Finance will deal with it as we need to.
Yeah, I know, I, that's right, so my emotional state.
Okay, so I'll second the motion, others in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Uh, public comment, you know, we've got, uh, we, how about, when we, the church has got a lot of people online, so I just wanted to see if, start there if we, if we could.
See anybody?
See anybody online that would make a public comment?
Morning Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, my name's Kathleen Millens, I'm Town Manager for the town of Stonington. Um, I've come here because I'm really concerned about, uh, crime in our area and the number of police calls. Um, I had noticed that they were trending up quite a bit, and I would just like to bring your attention, you probably already know it, but if you don't. Um, I asked for the last five years, what are the police calls? They don't include fire, they do not include any, it's just police calls. Two thousand nineteen was a hundred and seventy-nine, twenty-twenty was one-seventy-four, twenty-twenty-one, it went to two-thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, it went to three-oh-four, twenty-twenty-three is, uh, three-seventy-nine. That's a crime rate of pretty close, if not over sixty percent. In other communities, you know, heads would be rolling, you couldn't say that in New York City. And, but what I'm here to ask you for is, I really need, you know, the full support of, you know, the Commissioner's leadership, because we need help, especially in slot one. We don't have our own police force, we had to give it up because of cost, we do contract for extra services, twenty-four hours. Um, you know, we're extremely, um, you know. Privileged to have that, we like working with the Sheriff's Department, and we want to keep that going. But with this rate of crime, I don't know whether we'll have to think about asking, you know, for another day or whatever it is. So, I mean, I think it's critical that, you know, if there's a discussion about hiring that extra deputy, and I believe that was in the budget, you know, we need that sooner rather than later. I don't want to see anything bad happen, but, I mean, obviously, and I could probably assume, you know, from the other towns around, that's seeing significant, you know, increases with this. We know COVID happened, but, you know, there was not as much police around, or whatever the case may be, but this is something that we need to get handled. Stonington, we spend a lot of time, as far as trying to bring businesses in, we've got new restaurants, we're having challenges with the fishing industry, we're trying to transition that over. You know, and that means investment, we do have investment going, but the only thing is, when you have high crime statistics, you know, and it affects the schools, it affects the community. You know, that means it's probably not a great place to live, people go other ways and invest their dollars and stuff. The other thing is too, is, you know, I've heard that the State Police is doing some negotiations about, um, filling some of the slots. They left the patrol a couple of years ago, I believe, but we can see what the results of that decision has been, crime has increased. If you don't have a police presence, this is what happened, in my opinion. And also too, I mean, I've heard some slots will be covered with the nighttime patrol, but slot one, it won't. The only thing is, I don't like to see for our towns in Stonington being left out, I feel less discrimination. And, I mean, you know, a tax dollar is for everybody that's here, and I am going to follow up with higher-ups on this, because I think we're kind of disadvantaged, you know, what has happened with this. And, you know, Stonington already is an economically disadvantaged community, and I don't need to see more of it. You know, without that extra deputy, our contract hours aren't being met, they're short of staff at times, and past few years, I mean, we've been, um, we understand that it's a challenge, we understand that, you know, officers leave or they get poached with someone else, but, you know, a contract is a contract. And also too, the arguments or whatever it is about, uh, the needs of, you know, the Sheriff's Department with the increase in the crime statistics, we're asking respectfully for your leadership again. I mean, they need CAS, I mean tasers, I read the article in the Elsworth American, they need the tools to do their job. The last thing that we need is have, you know, an officer involved shooting, the less lethal ways that we can do this, you're better off, we're gonna be. And frankly, I mean, I have to say, some of these younger guys is coming up through the ranks, I've been really impressed with, you know, the, um, the patrolling they've been doing, the involvement they've been doing. And it's time also too, to let some of the younger ones, you know, be able to, uh, pro, you know, take and give their, uh, you know, all to the shovel, I guess is the best way to say it. And, um, they're doing a good job, they really are, and I like the way that it seems to be going up through, but I really want to see the tools that they, you know, need to have this, because I'm afraid with this increase in statistics, we're not going to face that, and all of us should be having a community conversation, how do we mitigate this increase in crime and police calls? And this is not good. Thank you.
What other? I'll remind you, I'm trying to keep it to the.
Okay, no question, all right. Uh, my name is Ray Lee Bird, I'm the Bureau of Stonington and Brooklyn Self Issueee. Um, I'm here today because I've been following through with the budget, through the budget, the different things, um, and the agendas. And I am here also to ask for more officers and, um, for the Sheriff's Department, and to get, um, their tasers updated, and the equipment that they need as well. Um, we are kind of salute, you know, down at the other end of the county, and the other issue is the call sharing thing. Um, as I dressed and I did bring in a, um, audition back in November, there was you and Mr. Clark was here. And I had three hundred signatures, and I went to each town and got them notarized, and it's that I didn't need to, and it was for more police officers, and, um, inside, I'm just here to, to ask you, you're in our district, for support of this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve O'Halloran, and forgive my ignorance, I've never been to a county with the Sheriff's Department in my life. I have a seat on the Elsworth City Council, and I'm here representing myself, not the Elsworth City Council, that to be very clear. I've sat in on a handful of meetings at City Hall, talking about the Elsworth Track. And I've heard many people chatter at various tables, that the Elsworth City Track or the School Department's Track needs to be rebuilt, redone, redone, or whatever. I'm not sure that I agree with asking the county to participate, but I'm here for asking you to, uh, at least sit down and discuss that. The reason being is this, I've heard many, uh, meetings that people say the county's not interested, the county's not interested. Elsworth, the county's see, but the county's not interested. In my personal view, we have the City of Elsworth that received our funds, and they have nitpicked and picked and picked instead of doing something good with it. The School Department got a lot of our funds, and they've nitpicked and picked and picked and done nothing significant. It's gone into many, many different things, whether it's employee bonuses or what have. So, basically, I'm here to ask you to at least sit down and talk with the city about participating in this track. Do I agree with it? No, and here's why I don't agree with it. I don't agree with it because you've got city that received our funds, and you've got the School Department that received it, I was talking about the City of Elsworth. And it seems that, um, after they've burned through their money, they're looking at your money for our funds. Not sure I'm in agreement with it, but I would respectfully ask that at least, I'm told that the county has no interest in discussing it. I would simply ask that when the city reach out, that perhaps there can be a discussion, the answer could be no, but it keeps coming up in these meetings. Um, and until it's put to bed, that the county is not going to participate, it's going to continue to be unholy. My thinking is this, if, if we could get the city to reach out to you, at least have a meeting, put your position to bed that you have no interest, if that is exactly your position, so we could move on as a city. Because I'm not sure I'm in agreement with it, when the city spends all theirs and then looks at yours, but that's what I'm here to discuss today. I think it would be beneficial that, um, if you get put to bed and let the city deal with it themselves, or if the county chooses to participate, that's fine too. In preparation of this meeting, a little different topic, I went online and watched a few YouTube meetings, if you will, and I saw some contentious behavior between the Sheriff and the Commissioner. And having sat on the City Council and been a victim of some political bullying, I would simply ask that we tone down and be respectful to everybody in every conversation. I've been a victim of that, sitting on the City Council, I didn't like it, I got pushed and shoved and pushed and shoved. I would just respectfully ask that we do this civilly, I don't know the history, but when I went on YouTube to see this process, I'm like, what is this all about? So, respectfully, having been politically bullied, uh, bullied, I would just ask that whatever contentions there are, let them exist, but let's all be civil to each other. Thank you.
Last today? Okay, thank you. All right, we have the, uh, minutes. Move to per the minutes on the April ninth, the Commissioners are going to announce for them. So, who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lieutenant Johnson?
Right. So, first let me thank you for the opportunity to come in and, uh, either provide some information or address questions, records, or this topic that came up, uh, on April nine, so thank you for that. Um, just by way of introduction, I know I've met you gentlemen before, but just where this is a public meeting for the record, my name is Michael Johnston, I'm Lieutenant of the Maine State Police, I command the Northern Field Troop. So, I oversee uniformed operations for a four-county area, Penobscot County, Washington County, Piscataquis County, and Hancock County. Um, and I wanted to be myself available to answer questions, but also provide some information about what came up on April nine. I, I guess I, I would also preface it by saying, I think, uh, the two ladies that were up here before talking about law enforcement services, I think that's, that's in some ways an unplanned good segue, because I think that's, regardless of the professional disagreements or differences that we may have as agencies, I think I, I, I think I feel confident speaking for both of us that we're trying to provide the best service we can to the residents that we serve, not just in Hancock County, but statewide, so if I'm not on board with Hancock County, my troop also statewide for the services that we offer. So, I certainly appreciate their comments and, and, uh, but I think that's, that's the goal that we both have. Um, so I have a couple of things that I, I wanted to, to speak about, but I also want to give the Commissioners an opportunity, if there are any questions upfront, uh, that you may have about what was discussed, or I'm happy to kind of go along, and then if there's questions or things that, that come up, certainly feel free to ask them, so. For you gentlemen, if you'd like me just to kind of gently talk about what came up, or if you had some questions you wanted to deal with upfront.
What was April ninth, was that our meeting?
I believe it was, sir, yes, I maybe.
And you're referring to comments made at that meeting?
Yes, I know the topic of our resource coordination agreement with the Sheriff's Office came up, and, uh, so I've watched that meeting, and I felt it was important for me to come here today to just be responsive to any questions or concerns that there may be, and also just to provide some additional information about where we are, and if it's helpful, how we've gotten where we are.
That's what I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear any progress on, on agreement with sharing calls, you have something?
Sure, so I, I think before I, I certainly will address that, but I think it's important a little bit, and I think you gentlemen know, because this isn't the first time I've been here, but for the benefit of people that are watching, and for the record, talk a little bit about kind of how we got here. Um, kind of specific to Hancock County, so I, and, and the dates may be a little off, but I think it was almost a year ago, I think there was, uh, this conversation came up, and I think Sheriff Kane, and I'm not quoting, said that, uh, a fairly innocent comment, that there was a trooper that was down, didn't know where to find the Sallyport, and I, I think that was reflective of the, some of the challenges the State Police were dealing with staffing, and we were having to have troopers from outside the county, come in the side of the county to patrol it, and live up to these agreements. So, I met with him, and we had some very good discussions about some of the challenges that we were facing as an agency, where for different reasons over the year, there'd be an increase, there'd been an increase in our mission without a commensary, an increase in staffing. We haven't had a, uh, increase in uniform head count since nineteen seventy-seven. So, so net zero on top of net zero, while your mission increases, and without any changes, uh, you see some cracks in the foundation, in addition to some of the practices that we had hired back in the nineties that were now eligible, and some challenges with recruiting, uh, we were, we were having some significant issues, and the Colonel, uh, tried to address that, at least in part for reorganization. So, I met with the Sheriff and talked about some of the difficulties of maintaining this agreement, and as you know, uh, because I think Commissioner Clark has a unique perspective on this, that we're the first, or one of the first counties to enter into these agreements back to the mid to late nineties. These agreements are not required statutorily, they're agreements, um, I think it's both agencies trying to work together to share resources for the benefit of the residents. Um, it's not required by statute, I think it's motivated by a desire to be good partners and to try to provide a better service to the citizens. You know, we talked about statutory mission, they're, they're kind of two relevant statutes, the State Police statute, it's under Title twenty-five, two, um, it talks about rural patrol, but to put it in context, that statute was enacted nineteen forty-four, before the presentation, when you talk about call sharing. The Sheriff's Department, and of course, they know their authorities better than I do, but they have a patrol function under Title thirty-eight, section fifty-two, which talks about their patrol responsibilities, in addition to some other ones. Now, the calls, um, in two thousand, I believe, dispatch centers became the default public safety entry, uh, points for calls. And there may be people in dispatch that know this better than I do, but my understanding is that two thousand, they became the default for landline calls, so they were getting the bulk of the nine-one-one calls. And I believe by request, at least by the dispatch centers of the counties, in two thousand twelve, they also started receiving the cellular calls, so they receive the calls. And through a call sharing, it's you share the calls, because each agency realizes we may have difficulty handling them on our own. The Sheriff's Departments and regional communication centers receive, uh, the bulk of the calls, the State Police gets wireless calls on the interstate corridor. So, um, so anyway, so I met with the Sheriff, and I said, we have some challenges with our agency, and I think it's important to be upfront and transparent with our partners about what some of those challenges are. Uh, which around sixty to sixty-five percent of the time, I have a trooper that is coming from outside Hancock County to patrol Hancock County, to kind of live up to this agreement that we have. And it creates some challenges for us, and it doesn't create an ideal level of service, when I have a trooper that is coming from a long distance away to respond to a call for service. I have some concerns about response time, and I think we can all agree that patrol works best when you have geographic stability. When you have troopers, deputies, and officers that live in the area, they patrol, um, it's their home area, they're vested in the community, and you can have the best trooper, deputy, or officer there is, but if they're playing an away game, you're not going to get the same type of service that you would if they were living in the community. But we had an agreement, and we were trying to live up to it, and I felt it was important to let Sheriff Kane know that we had some significant challenges. So, I think we engaged on a discussion to say, are there the things that the State Police could do within a resource coordination agreement, but not have the call sharing? And, and, and I think a resource coordination agreement is what we have, a part of that is a call sharing, resource coordination agreements can look very different, where you coordinate and share resources other than calls. Part of that resource coordination room could be sharing calls, where you divide up the county into designated geographic areas, and you say, we're going to patrol it this week, or today, you're going to patrol it the other time, and any calls that we receive, the Sheriff's Office will be transferred to you. So, call sharing is one aspect of a resource coordination agreement. So, I engaged with him to say, are there the things that the State Police could do other than call sharing right now, because of the difficulties we're having? And I think we both embarked on a good faith discussion, in fact, that came before this committee, I want to say maybe a little more than a year ago, in the May or June timeframe, to talk about some of the issues I'm talking about now, so I could be upfront and transparent with our partners about some of the challenges. So, we engaged in those discussions to try to see, I think I presented a proposal, to say, these are some of the things the State Police could continue to do to provide world policing services, and even though there's not technically call sharing with all the things that the State Police can offer, right now, based on their staffing. We tried to reach an agreement, and we couldn't, but I think we both worked in good faith, I was here at the Budget Committee, I was, you know, working with the Sheriff, realizing that doing this may create some challenges for him, we're certainly not unsympathetic to that. So, around the fall, it was decided that despite some of the challenges and difficulties, we're going to stay in this agreement and continue to patrol one-third of the county. And I know that a narrative had developed, and I understand that, that the State Police is pulling out, they're withdrawing, I, I would, I would take exception with that characterization, but suffice it to say, we stayed in this agreement, and our intention is to be in this agreement. Our intention is not to pull out of call sharing, we will continue to patrol one-third of the county. And so, we met with the Sheriff and his then Chief Deputy, explained that to him, and, uh, um, and, and I'm not here today to say we're pulling out, uh, that is not our intention. We are here to live up to that agreement, we realize it's important for the citizens, number one, and to try to be good partners. So, then the issue is, well, what areas are you going to patrol? And, um, the county's divided into three geographical areas, the one slot, two slot, and three slot. And in the past, that's generally been done by agreement, in fact, it's addressed in the call sharing, where designated the Sheriff and the designated of, of myself will meet and try to work out patrol areas in advance. And in twenty twenty-three, we patrolled slots two and three more than any of the slots, I think we patrolled the one slot fifty-eight times, and there was a reason for that, and this topic came up, where we don't have a lot of troopers in Hancock County to begin with, and we don't have very many in the one slot. And as of today, while I don't like to mention exact precise geographic locations, I believe in the meeting, we referred to that most of our troopers live in the Loin area, I have one trooper that lives in the one slot. And I don't have very many troopers that live in, in Hancock County, um, less than five. On any given day, I have three to four troopers that are patrolling from northern Penobscot and Patton, all the way down through central Penobscot to Hancock County. So, we were trying to come to an understanding of where we would patrol, and, and I gave the Sheriff's Office, they were gracious, they said, okay, they said, well, you're going to be in the two and the three slot the majority of the time. And then recently, it came up about, well, we need to work out some sort of, uh, uh, understanding, because we're, we both have different schedules to address the overlap, and how about, instead of swapping daily, we swap weekly? And we've done that with other agreements, and it works well, and then you eliminate some of the time overlap, and only have this once a week instead of every day. So, it was my understanding, and, and certainly the Sheriff, obvious people have his own side of it, that they were agreeable to continuing the same arrangement that we've had for the past almost year and a half, where we would primarily be in the two and the three slot, and I'll explain why, and we would swap, uh, uh, weekly instead of daily. And then we tried to reach out in agreement, and then a counterproposal was offered, uh, which I think you, you gentlemen have seen, and for a reason that I think I, I stated in an email that I sent to the Sheriff's Office, but I know that they had provided to you gentlemen, that wasn't going to work for us right now. Um, we are committed to patrolling Hancock County, and I am certainly open to revisiting this issue in six months, once I have more troopers in Hancock County. It is our intention to put more troopers in Hancock County once we hire them. And once I have a better spread of troopers in the county, I certainly think it makes sense to try to be in each slot an equitable amount of time. For right now, it's very difficult to be in this agreement, but we're committed to doing it, and I was simply asking to continue the arrangement that we've had for the better part of the last year and a half, until we are in a better position manpower-wise to revisit, to revisit both the weekly swap and the slot swap. Being in slot two all the time probably works better for me as an agency, but I also realize the Sheriff wants, needs to be in the entire county, he represents the county as the chief law enforcement initiative for the county. So, permanent slot, slot coverage probably doesn't serve his interest, and also, he has deputies that are living in different areas. So, I would not characterize as this is better than dealing with the pain than us, this is us saying that I've been very upfront, transparent with the challenges of living up to this agreement, we are committed to doing it, we are not looking to pull out. We are committed to making this agreement, but for the foreseeable future, so this works for us, realizing that we have a, not only a troop mission, but I have a statewide mission, my troopers can be pulled and deployed across the state at any given moment, and they are, for all sorts of different things. To try to come to an understanding that for at least the next six months, can we continue this arrangement, then revisit, and I hope I have, uh, more troopers in the county, and we can revisit this issue. So, those are the discussions we've been having, um, I'm happy to say we have a meeting next week, it will be attended by myself, Colonel Ross and Major Air with the Sheriff. Uh, the other thing I would say is, this was never an ultimatum. Um, this was, I understand that I drafted an email, that really memorialized the conversation that I had the previous week with Chief Deputy Birch and Lieutenant DePuy. Um, but it was never an ultimatum, it was never take or leave it, uh, it was described that way, I think in that meeting, I actually said, until we can figure out next steps, we probably need to maintain the status quo. So, I would take a little bit of exception with the characterization by anyone that that was an ultimatum, first of all, if we were even considering pulling out of this agreement, and we're not, the agreement says you have to provide three months' notice. This would never be a, you know, take it or leave it with five days, that's not how you treat partners, that's not how you just, you treat people, it's not how I dealt with Sheriff Kane up to this point, I've tried to act in good faith and be honest and transparent, despite sometimes our agency disagreements. So, that's really one I, I've wanted to come here and, and, and explain to the Commissioners, um, and, and I understand there's going to be agency disagreements moving forward, we're not always going to agree. But, uh, this is not something where the State Police is pulling out of the county, we're abandoning the county, we're trying to work through this, I'm hopeful we can find a resolution, um, even though at this point, it seems like we're at an impasse. Uh, but that's really what I, I wanted to come here to kind of communicate and say, and, and, uh, because I know this is an important issue, and it's been going on for a while.
I, perhaps none of anybody else in this crew understands the political and ethical issue of wanting to serve everybody in Hancock County as the county's sheriff. But I think we're in desperate times, and I think it's wanting to call for some desperate and creative moves to make law enforcement work, to satisfy everybody from Stonington right through to student, you know, student county line. And as I listen to you, it sounds to me like you can draw from Penobscot and Washington County to Hancock County, and you don't have anybody here, and if that be the case, it sounds to me like slot three is. And if that be the case, it sounds to me like slot three is probably the optimum slot to have if you called above. Also, because of the disparity in schedule and they don't overlap well. I'm just curious as to what the possibility would be that you would take on the full responsibility of slot three twenty-four seven. The sheriff's department would take on the responsibility for one and two always. Which makes some sense because they have a contract in slot one, they have a contract in slot two. Their base of operations is in slot two. And so you wouldn't have it, you wouldn't have deputy working one and three and a sergeant running back and forth in the slots and he's not responsible to the day. I'm just curious as, wouldn't it be despite all the other issues, as a practical matter, wouldn't it work better if you were to dedicate your yourself, your department to handling all calls in slot three all the time? The sheriff handles all the calls for service in slot one and two, and then that gives us now a sense of what we need to do to accommodate the sheriff's needs to provide service in those two.
So it's 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 a good idea and it's actually something that we was, came up prior to this uh when I Chief Deputy Mayon was here about permanent slot coverage. And that was something we just had a conversation about. I don't think I got any further than that. Um and and I think that he had, that he had, there were some benefits and that there were some drawbacks. Uh I know I I still have to come, some concerns at this point about giving permanent slot coverage for some of the same reasons I have concerns about uh being in the one slot because it's so far removed. Uh I I'm certainly willing to have some further discussions on it and those may be discussions we have next week. Um but uh you know, I think in an ideal world, we would rotate throughout the county like the sheriff's office. We would spend a period of time in each patrol slot. And I think that's fair. I think that's equitable. I think that serves the interests of both the agencies. Where we are, and our troopers are getting exposure to the entire county. And and that's how it used to be done. We used to rotate throughout the entire county. And in twenty twenty-four, it's true, we have not patrolled the one slot. I I don't know if it's, I I know it was characterized as refusal and it certainly may look like that. I think I, with my understanding, we were operating under the agreement that due to some of the challenges that the one slot just wasn't that that presented more challenges than being in the two and the three, which being in the two and the three presented some challenges. And and of course, I'm not lost on the fact that the lady is up here, well, Gere Alston, intended to talk about the issues in the one slot. And and I realize, you know, what service are we providing to the citizens? When I have a trooper that may be traveling from Newport to Gere Alston. And 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 I understand that there are response times for deputies as well. That that's not lost on me. This is not about better them suffer this than us. This is trying to look at what our mission is for the state police, where it's county specific, but also state specific. We have to put troopers in my troop statewide for variety and everything. And uh so um it it's 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 a good idea, something we've looked at and, but I don't think it ever got beyond the conversation stage. I I think I told Chief Deputy Mayon that probably isn't going to work for us right now. I think it's worthy of looking at all options and trying to discuss something. And and I'm hoping we can reach an agreement. Um but this is, I I just, it was important for me to say that this is not us pulling out and this was not us giving us an ultimatum. I I work really hard because I believe it's the right thing to do. To certainly not give that impression throughout the past year, dealing with Sheriff Kane and coming to these meetings and trying to engage him because I think that's what professional partners do. So I I certainly wouldn't do all that and just to think you have four days to agree to this or not agree to this somewhere else. That that is absolutely not the case.
My way of of history on this thing, Al's Colfield and I just got together, you know, we actually did a one-year pilot project, call share. Back in the good old days. Back in the good old days is when you've got a thousand applications for every opening you had and we've got a dozen or two dozen. Many times have changed dramatically for both of us. And wanting to be in all three slots and all is probably not an option anymore. And I'm just saying, I'm I'm just saying that I think it's time that we set aside the good old days and whatnot. We understand that the times we're in and whatnot and try to come up with a solution that will work for the for the times that we're in now.
I I I don't disagree. I think history and tradition can be a guidepost, but it can also be an anchor. And sometimes it keeps you submitted in place. I I, so I think those are discussions that we will absolutely have at the sheriff's office again. We have a meeting scheduled for next week on the books. I I suspect that will be constructive. I don't have any reason to think otherwise. But at the end of the day, you know, um these these resource coordination agreements, which are important, but they're slowly becoming the minority. They, most of the state doesn't have them. There's a few counties that have them, but you have your county that has an agreement. You have Kennebec, Waldo. Um you have Hancock, you have Penobscot, you have Roustick. Um and you have some resource agreements like we have with Washington and I certainly know that's been very well publicized, where we provide services other than taking calls, like handling all fatal crashes and providing some other specialized services. But in the other counties, there's no agreements and we used to have them. We used to have them in Somerset. We used to have them in Cumberland. We used to have them in Oxford. Uh we used to have them in Franklin. And to your point, sir, I think times have changed and I think it's, to me, it's an agreement. It has to be mutually beneficial for both agencies with the goal of serving the citizens. If at the point it doesn't, and that's, that can be debatable, and if these agreements are no longer serving its purpose, which is to provide, to share resources and coordinate resources for those who are in the best position to provide them while helping the citizens of Maine and that county, then you may need to look at at something different. And there may be some growing pains through that.
Uh first of all, thank you for coming, Lieutenant Johnson. This is it's a learning curve and you're helping with that. Uh it's amazing to me that you haven't really had a staffing increase since uh nineteen seventy-seven. But you've talked about uh new troopers possibly in the county. Is that changing? Are you getting more troopers or?
So so it's it's a good question. So a couple of things. So this past session legislature has awarded sixteen new positions in the entire state. We had asked, we, yes, sixteen. That is the first increase in uniform headcount since nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight. We've had some onesies or twosies there in terms of detectives and the on-site homicide unit. And some like administrative support, but not a a frontline increase. We'd asked for thirty-two. Uh the governor included that in her supplemental budget. It worked its way through the approval and review process, through appropriations. Ultimately, they settled on sixteen. The goal behind those thirty-two positions is though those would allow us to bolster the current agreements that we have now. Not necessarily enter into new agreements, but honor and bolster the agreements we have now. We've got sixteen for the entire state. We still have vacancies on the book. We're still hiring. Um we expect that the retirement wheel will slow down sometime in the beginning of twenty twenty-five. We are trying to change our hiring and training format to to meet the challenges and be competitive with recruitment. Um so the short answer is we are continuing to hire troopers. And they're going to go across the state and we are going to continue to hire troopers in the northern field trip. And priority areas for me are Hancock County. So I can have troopers that are living and residing in Hancock County more than I do now. That is a short, mid and long-term goal for my job.
You talked about uh agreements not required by statute. So if an agreement, let's say the agreement didn't come to fruition, you I take your comments to be, we're still going to answer calls when we need to. Is that the case or is that is it going to be impossible to do that or?
Well, no, I think I think it's a, it's a little bit of in the middle. I said, first of all, it it's it's important that, well, I think the description that was provided at the April ninth meeting as to who has the calls and who receives the calls and who responsibility is. I think it was a fairly good description in terms of the sheriff's departments and the RCCs receive the calls. Now, that was by request. They they, my understanding is that historically they asked to receive those calls. Uh in two thousand, it became the default and then in twenty twelve, they got all of the wireless calls. So the question is, if you don't have an agreement, who is responsible in uh to handle those calls? Well, in counties where you don't have an agreement, the sheriff's department receives those calls that they get. And the state police responds when requested. It might be a specialty deployment or it might be a call that the state police has unique expertise or jurisdiction in. Obviously, the state police is responsible for all suspicious death and homicide investigations unless they occur in Portland, um in Bangor, commercial vehicle enforcement. Uh certainly specialized deployment like it's the computer crimes unit, the tag team, the bomb team. If those agencies don't have those services, the sheriff's departments are responding to those calls and then asking the state for, the the state police for assistance as needed. Now, if we don't have an agreement and a call comes in and the sheriff's department is tied up, then practically what that looks like is we're tied up, we're busy. Can you handle this call? Of course we will. I mean, all an agreement does is sets out uh um in the beginning, okay, we have this area, all calls are going to commit, we're going to handle and we'll reach out to you if we need assistance. So I I don't want to make it sound like there's an abdication of responsibility and an emergency call comes in and we're and we're quibbling over whose responsibility is. Those things, you know, I think an agreement upfront helps eliminate some of that, but in the areas where you don't have call sharing, the sheriff's department responds to the bulk of those number one calls, I think it's fair to say. And then they will request our services and assistance as needed depending on what that call is.
And the reason I would ask those those prior questions and that I forgot the names, but I must be the ninth. Uh there was talk of, you know, because of that agreement, Hancock County may need to, because of the the lack of an agreement, Hancock County may need to increase the number of its uh deputies. Um if you, doesn't sound like we're there. I mean, can you offer an opinion on that?
Well, I, far be it for me to tell another agency what they need. Right? To get into them and say you have enough, you don't have enough. That's really, I it it's really not, it wouldn't be appropriate. You know, I I, you have numbers. It's all about how many people you have, but what are they doing? What are what are their priorities and what are their, and a lot of my troopers that are assigned to patrol, sometimes half their time is spent on providing specialty services to the rest of the state. You know, seventy percent of our specialty deployments are called other agency deployment, that is, we're deploying to assist an agency other than ourselves. Um with one of our specialized teams and I have a lot of seventy percent, you know, of specialty deployments are not to support the state police. It's because another agency, municipality or county has requested it and it doesn't make sense for them to have those resources uh for all sorts of different reasons. So some of my patrol troopers, a lot of them, they all carry specialties and and patrol is certainly not a part-time job, but it's it's a collateral duty that they're balancing. And and I don't, I certainly don't like to discuss numbers, but I, because I think it's important to put in context. So I I don't know how many deputies the sheriff's department has. Uh I have, including myself, I have twenty-six people that cover a full county area in the statewide responsibilities. You're like, well, that seems, is that enough? Is that too much? It all depends on what they're spending their time on. And and our specialty mission has grown considerably. And so we're trying to balance that with our world patrol and these call sharing agreements. And I think what you're seeing is some of the cracks in the foundation that we're trying to address. So, you know, there's been some legislative initiatives on this. There was LD six thirty, uh which did not pass, but was a a way to provide funding for counties. Um using uh some, so maybe some funding strategies. There was a real estate transfer tax. Um there's been some other things that have come up. Uh what what I, what I, what I sometimes see happening, and and again, this isn't for me and and I'm not saying this is Hancock County, but leveraging this argument about call sharing to try to grow staff, certainly if the sheriff is taking on more responsibilities, he's going to need the staff to deal with it. But, you know, I think it 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 misses or doesn't see what the state police is doing other than call sharing in the state, in the county. And there's, there's a lot where that mission has grown. So it's not for me to tell another agency, you need more people, you don't need more people. But um that that's nor would I want them to say you have enough. We've had to prioritize the look up to these agreements and balance our other statewide mission. And it's some of the things you're seeing here today is as a result of that, us trying to meet those agreements when it's difficult for us, but prioritize what we're doing statewide.
You know, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, my question was poorly worded. I, but I thank you for your answer. That's
I think too is that there's an issue here that we have to be real careful. If we leave the sheriff's department with the impression that no matter what, we'll continue to give them additional manpower, there's no incentive to try to compromise on, you know, a resource agreement. So I would really need to position this situation so that the sheriff has to make a decision between compromising or simply holding out for more people.
Well, and the reason I brought the topic at all, which would affect, I'm not sure the county has the, has the resources to expand you know, to provide service without the absence of state police, rural patrol. And it's comforting to hear that you're not abandoning rural patrol. You're not walking away from us. You're, you're, you're you're, you know, you're actually in a better spot than you are a year ago, so.
Excuse me. When did you say you could possibly see improvement in your staffing for Hancock County with this new facility?
Uh so uh with, if everything works out, uh and they complete their training, um I should have another trooper in Hancock County in the next month. Uh do I think I need more troopers than just that one? Yes, but my, it is a focus of mine. And 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 obviously we have a training process. So if there's an uncertain outcome for everyone, if you go through a lot of training, I'm hoping to have at least another one uh before the end of the year. Um and and maybe more. So our hiring process is very fluid. We have people in the application process. They indicated where they'd like to go. Sometimes they did. So but I but I think that with any luck in the next month, I'll have a trooper assigned to Hancock County. So I expect that this will get better. I don't, it it's a goal of ours. I need, as long as we're patrolling and I'm call sharing an area, I need troopers living in that area for all the reasons I stated. That is a priority for us as an agency and myself as a troop, to put people in that area. Not not your county, not your problem, but a similar issue in northern Penobscot, getting troopers in northern Penobscot County. And uh and I'm sure sometimes the sheriff's department has some of the same challenges getting people to live in an area. And that's another priority for us, is to have have troopers there. So um anyway, I'm I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic. Uh but given some of the narrative that kind of popped up about, you know, kind of kind of pulling out, I always approach this as try to have a negotiation and agreement and both parties agree. And I also understand that it doesn't mean that I'm going to get everything I want. The sheriff's department's kind of, that's not an agreement. You may have to. And and it may seem like, well, the state police is saying they're only going to do this. I I'm simply given the challenges that I think I've made very clear, just a little consideration to maybe revisit this topic later on. And there are some states where you don't have any agreements and things work well and they've carved out the role and um it it, so it's very county specific. And some of the more rural counties have more challenges in terms of resources and funding than some of the larger counties.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Johnson.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add to your monthly report?
Oh, sir.
Except to follow your chief director's reports presented.
I was in favor.
Hi. Hi. Miller, I heard by rumor that the Nard Waiters Bridge is completed. Is that correct?
I have not heard it.
Wow. The local residents are reporting that they can cross.
Great.
So now that it's done, we're going to be asked to contribute to a portion of the cost. Is that correct, Miller?
Um we need the um we need the easement, the right-of-way easement before we can uh act on any funding.
Okay, so that's the next step in the process?
That's the next step. That's what we're waiting for.
And that's just a, that's just a matter of waiting. There's no, there's no uh risk there is, Emily?
They they've done all the work. They did the design. They did the contracts. They did the construction. All the liability is on them for the construction of the bridge. Uh they're just going to give us an easement to use that road for. I don't remember the length of time. It was either fifty years or ninety-nine years.
And and that will be paid for with TIF money, correct?
Yes, out of the recreational trails in the TIF.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Uh I'm going to move to approve hiring after our construction to make repairs to the Martin Bridge Road in uh estimated amount of thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thirty-six thousand six hundred.
It it is thirty-six six. I'm sorry that there's one zero, so my motion is thirty-six thousand six hundred.
Second motion. I'll listen in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Agreement between Cherryfield and the county?
No, it's just, it's an increase of eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents, but it's, I think it's what I'm expecting on all of these trash agreements.
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Cherryfield and Hancock County UT T ten SD as presented.
Second motion. I'll listen in favor.
Hi. On the next one, On the next one, Miller, are you willing to serve?
Mister.
Move to appoint Miller Billings to Hancock County seat on the Main Land Use Planning Commission.
Sign of the motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And thank you, Miller.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good day.
So I got a question before we start with all of these. Do we have what we need to hear? Have we heard from Kitty on all this stuff?
Have not received the response yet.
A and C.
Potentially any multi-year agreement that would project beyond the actual timetable of the grant, what's the question right now?
So. Uh. The chair has indicated that's item A and C, is that those are the only two?
Two for this, under this number seven.
So would be appropriate to move the table, I have A and C?
Yes.
Oops, I'll move.
I'll second that motion. Well, only that. At the last meeting, Andy, we approved you seeking a grant to buy WatchGuard. All the offices in Hancock County, isn't that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And is this Chuck, is this A, item A? Are we buying the same equipment that the grant would cover if we got the grant?
Right, I thought that grant didn't, didn't go through, so.
So there was an initial grant, Commissioner, that I submitted to the Department of Justice under the Burn Program. That was unsuccessful. Having an item on the agenda to, and what I discussed with you on April ninth, was permission to seek congressionally directed spending as a funding source, which we're pursuing.
My question still remains, if you're successful in that effort, does it mean buying out of that what? Chuck is asking us to approve.
That would be correct. However, that's for the entirety of the law enforcement community in Hancock County.
Does make any difference. I mean, if we're benefiting from your grant, why are we spending ARPA funds to purchase it now if we could get that in your grant later?
I I think the the honest answer, Commissioner, and most straightforward one is that there's no guarantee that my grant application is going to be successful to fund this.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, what a waste of ARPA funds if we ultimately got approval. And we've already spent the money and bought the equipment because you're not going to be able to refund that, correct?
Not refunded, but it can be repurposed.
What's that mean?
That means that if we satisfy, I think, the initial initial project, we'd be able to use the balance of those federal funds for other related purposes.
Too late, I don't know, because if there are funds that we could have used this for, we spent them for WatchGuard. You can't repurpose that and give it back to us, it's too late.
Well, that's item A, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm moving the table. Item A and C, and that's one of, that's among the reasons.
Do we have a date for that, or will we know when?
Well, when you need to be on the agenda, if.
Yeah, today.
We decided that this item could be covered under the grant request.
Oh, we don't know that yet.
Well, I know it.
But is the application deadline today, or is the, will you know the results today?
The application deadline is today. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Well. My motion, which by the way, hasn't been signed.
Yes, I said it, I said it in your motion.
Okay, you did.
Under discussion, though, I'm simply trying to determine whether or not we even need to discuss this again in the future if we yield to Andy. Grant request.
I I I mean, what I'm, my initiative is purely speculative with with no guarantee. And and, you know, this this represents, you know, the bird in the hand versus uh, maybe.
Is there, is this a renewal, a renewal?
On the WatchGuard system, is there a replacement of the current system?
And so how soon does that expire?
Uh, it doesn't expire until next year, so we have time.
Yeah, but this also includes body cameras that they don't have, correct?
Uh, no, uh.
Well.
Not not necessarily. I I gave you three different codes and then actually I gave you a fourth one, which I suggested.
But to me, it sounds like we're not at the spot that we don't want to take a decision on it right now because we don't know, I don't understand that yet.
So my big question is, we have a grant resulting before our.
What was that, Chuck?
Uh, my big concern with the grant is if we know the results of that before the ARPA funds run out and we can't use it, so.
When is, when when are you getting a, an idea of? When would that be, Andy?
Approximately at the end of the year. Based on past experience.
I know, but if we came in, as I understand, if we came in December fifteenth, that we had a purchase agreement with WatchGuard to deliver. You know, June first, that meets the criteria for ARPA funded. So I don't think. So I think the timing might still work. Okay, call the voting.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So I didn't see your table.
Okay, I have the laptops. Our current laptops in the cars are approximately eight years old. Uh, for Banyan and I to repair those or work on, we have to buy them off of eBay, Amazon, use them for spare parts.
I was summing through the minutes looking for something else. I came across in December twenty, maybe. Uh, approval to spend twenty-three thousand dollars for twenty laptops. Uh, refurbished or something. These the ones we we have today?
Yeah, that is correct. Those refurbished, when you buy those refurbished, they're three, four, or five years old when you do that.
No, it's twenty-one, December twenty-one. They wouldn't have been purchased till probably January, February twenty-two, which means they're two years old. So I understand that they're already junk. I understand that it's it's too bad we spent twenty-three thousand, but two years out of them, but I understand that, but uh, they're not eight years old. They're only two years old refurbished.
Right, but the refurbished means you bought them after somebody else used them.
I see, originally they're eight years old, you bought refurbished two years ago.
That's correct.
And it's a moot issue anyways because they're junk, right?
I can't operate them through Windows ten, Panasonic doesn't make a model anymore.
My question is, why forty-one? Can you break that down for us?
Uh, that's a number that uh, Banyan had got when he investigated and looked into it, uh.
Where are they going?
Uh, we're going to go to the Sheriff Department, two for the I T department, and the reason of the I T is uh. At home, we cannot use our personal computers with a C G S. We have to have a laptop ourselves. Uh, we're getting them for E M A. We're getting them for uh, R C C.
So you're getting two. How many C S O get?
That would be twenty-eight, then, take the thirty off, take the two off, and then Banyan had uh, two for detectives. Three for the R C C and six for E M A.
Wait a minute. Twenty what for SNL?
Twenty-eight.
And two more for detectives?
Two for, you know, two for detectives, two for I T. Three for R C C and six for the E M A.
Uh, three for R C C?
Correct.
Who uses them in R C C?
Uh, Bob uses them. Uh, he has them for backup devices in case he has a critical issue with R C C.
And by six, Andy and E M A?
I have four users. One vehicle. And one spare.
But we have a docking station, you need it from wherever, why do you need a separate one?
I u- I use the Toughbook as my office computer.
You don't want to take that docking in your car later?
Correct.
So I'm going to move to approve purchasing forty-one Gen Tech G Tag. B three sixty laptops and thirty-six D S G T C. Twelve oh two dash three docks with extended warranty, a purchase price of two hundred twenty-three thousand fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. For Motorola Solutions to be paid for using ARPA funds.
I'm not going to second that because I still would like to understand why we're buying so many. The S O has sixteen deputies, two lieutenants, which is eighteen, two detectives, which is twenty. Uh, chief deputy and the sheriff, which is twenty-two. And yet they want total of thirty. Where's the other eight? Why is the other eight necessary for the sheriff's office?
That I'm not sure.
Shouldn't I know before we approve these?
Yeah, I don't need to make count how many. Yeah, Banyan counted them, he saw it here today, so.
I, I didn't have anything to do with that count. I can just speak to the staffing that we have. Um, we currently have after today, I'm proposing uh, the hire of a new deputy that brings us up to um, twenty-one to twenty-two, depending on what like happens on the agenda here. Uh.
Excuse me, Dakota, but if we gave everybody from the sheriff, right down through to detectives, that's twenty-four?
I believe it's going to be something like twenty-two, twenty-three. With that being said, though, the civil deputy. Um, if he had a laptop to be able to do his services and things like that.
It's twenty-four.
So if we're at about twenty-four, um, I do know in times past, we have had uh, laptops that, you know, do break and we need a replacement for the road guys, so.
We have one or two spares.
I'd say one or two spares.
I T, I T has the spares. It looks to me like you've got something like six too many for the S O.
And that's finally after you did come to work.
Well, if we want to table this item, I was under the impression that somebody had done a bit of story and.
Uh, Banyan didn't go to editor, he came up with thirty, I can't kind of how for, how he came up with that number.
And that's a good reason to take it under, but.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so my motion failed, I'm gonna table this item. Uh, for.
And I moved to second, I I seconded the motion to table.
Yes. All those in favor? Hi.
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 Next one up is uh, firewall protection. Uh, current firewalls are five years old coming up in two thousand twenty-five. I figured we might want to replace those now rather than next year. Uh, they're end of life. They demand support and the security for our network. Uh, so I'm looking at purchasing two for the amount of thirty thousand seven fifty-six and also replace the airport firewall.
I'm going to move to approve purchasing an update of Hancock County's firewall protection from the air communication for total sum of thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars ninety-eight cents to be paid for using ARPA funds.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Yeah, the phone system we already purchased. Uh, we've had add-ons as we've gotten into more detail about the phone system. Actually, that is E and F. And E is comprised of, you know, what's called the internal panic button, which I do not know a whole lot about. I don't know. You can describe what the panic button does for them. I know Dennis Falls is something he requested.
Correct, the panics, the the reef system is.
Is is that the system that we talked about?
Yes.
At the last meeting and I got on the list.
Correct. So it includes that, includes that additional hardware we need for the phones to work, so.
I would have some placing on a tire phone system?
No.
I was going to say, this sounds a credit sheet.
No, this is, we already did the system cost, so.
Okay, so this is an add-on.
These are add-ons, that's right.
Which is the stuff that we discussed. Okay.
That's right.
So I'm going to move to approve the additional costs associated with the installation of the SwitchVox phone system totaling six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars seventy-eight cents. Be paid from ARPA funds.
Second amendment. In favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, F is the uh, additional cost to add the airport into our phone system, so that they're just an extension of our phone system. Four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and but what that does is uh, in in the meantime, it bumps them up forty meg on their end to a gigabit. And the monthly cost actually goes down by a hundred and fifty dollars per month once we do it, so they're going to have savings per month and add them to our phones.
So this solves that old dark fiber, getting internet speed issue that we talked about.
That is correct, they share that as well.
I mean, that's refreshing. Usually every time we buy something, we have an annual costing, but out of sight. Maintenance fees, but you hit it, something's open down after this.
So I move uh, integrating the airport into the new phone system for a total of four thousand seven hundred eleven dollars twenty-eight cents to be paid for from ARPA funds.
Sign of the motion. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 And last item is the laptop for the the drone that was donated.
So I have a question there. Um. That, that is not one of the laptops that was.
That's right, it is separate.
Okay. Wouldn't, and I don't know what it's equal power G ten is, is it a, is it a, is it a rugged enough laptop for that environment?
Yes.
Okay, and one of the laptops from above would serve?
Uh, no, because the the graphics says it, it's laptop is different.
Okay, great, you touched on it, thank you. I'm going to move to approve purchasing of an H P Z book powered G ten laptop for the operation of the drone that was donated from the sheriff's office for some totaling one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents to be paid from ARPA funds.
Sign of the motion.
Hi.
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 Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we finally, uh, working with Andy, got um, the C S D application together for the the rotary broom. It's, you know, that we had to pull off the C I P a few years ago, so. See if this works. Not um, with our employments, we may be back at a a little bit better funding anyway. So in in playments, we still have to wait till late June. I checked in on it yesterday and the F A still doesn't have the numbers, but um, the numbers I came up with were in good shape.
You're optimistic it's over ten, ten thousand though?
Yeah, I'm up to me, yeah. The the numbers I come up with were like at ten thousand two hundred and something. And it may be even plus that, so.
That's right. I'm shy on uh, the sweep, right?
Yeah, this is, this is um. And and the other side of this whole thing is, these things are about, uh, last check was about five hundred days out. So even if you, the money came in, you know, we're looking at two, maybe three years down the road before we get one. So.
When, when?
By the end of the year, it's no different than the other.
Yeah.
Right.
Same scenario.
It's typically, it seems to be a nine to eleven month turnaround.
Okay. And we never know.
No, it's federal government and it's Congress and.
So I'm going to move to authorize the airport manager Leroy needs to submit a twenty twenty-five congressionally directed spending application for funding of a runway rotary room and authorize the chair to sign the application on behalf of Hancock County.
Second amendment. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Nope, that's all I got.
Thank you. I think we've talked about this one, right, so we can. Next one, sorry, so I could just.
I'm sorry, which is it?
The letter of support for this.
Yeah, so the application doesn't need to be signed, commissioners, but I would request you you sign the letter of support for the application, please.
Move to approve and sign the letter of support for C D S.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, application as presented.
Am I officially up then?
Sorry, I was pre.
Oh, no, that's right. And then there's this, sorry.
And I'll second the motion for discretion.
So, yes, uh, so I'm requesting two letters of support for you to sign, want to support the uh, application for the submission uh, that I'm putting in today. And the second one for the, I learned this at the airport. So two separate letters.
So my motion was floral. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, and we have copies of them on there.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Just a question before we move on. These are, especially the airport one, electronic submission crap, so there isn't really anything for the chair to sign that last one, right?
I I'd like for them to sign the letter, if they could, and I'll scan them, including.
Yeah, so they, no, but I mean, for the actual application itself, the only thing they have to sign is the letter system.
That is correct. Yeah, there's no, there's no applications or. And then the other item I had was just a a brief anecdotal uh, update in respect to the FEMA disaster recovery operations that have been underway. Um, I'm not saying anecdotal, I mean, I'm happy to answer all your questions, but uh, I could speak to hours of it, so. Um, just very briefly, December eighteen storm, which was the first event. There was assistance offered to uh, the public assistance program to towns and county. Uh, including our U T. Uh, FEMA has been here, they have reviewed each of those towns, those claims. That extends everything from Miller's reported damages in the U T to. That extends everything from Millard's, uh, reported damages in UT to the Ellsworth middle school roof and some of the things that you're aware as consequence of the December eighteenth storm. Uh, there was no individual assistance offered, however, to homeowners or businesses as a result of the December eighteenth storm. For the January tenth to thirteenth storm, however, both the systems, two towns, the county and individuals and businesses were offered. In that process, there are any underway. Uh, to date, there have been approximately eighty-five individuals that have, uh, gone to the Moore Center, which is where FEMA has established their disaster recovery center and the business recovery center. Um, I will share that business recovery seems to be taking the form, includes our fishing community, seems to be taking the form of eight percent loan, small business administration loans rather than outright financial assistance to that community, so. That's somewhat contentious, um, and as far as homeowners, there haven't been any homes that have been evaluated for damages. And the FEMA money that's been conveyed, perhaps one hundred thousand dollars so far, is just based on FEMA engaging and interacting with individuals, so. Roughly each person who speaks with FEMA gets two hundred dollars in replace of power outages or food spoilage and things like that. That represents the funds that have been conveyed so far in Hancock County. So.
Bar Harbor, I saw one in Elver, FEMA truck, that's.
Indeed, you did.
This is.
Uh, that is in support of those missions, yeah. That's- that's their, those trucks are their internet connection from when they're here in the communities. So what we've done is we've had each of the coastal communities, um, not each of the communities, but we've had regionally coastal communities host, for instance, near Allen, Stoneford, a number of occasions, Blue Hill this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, Bucksport, Saturday and Sunday this coming Saturday, FEMA folks traveling, you know, the Swans Island to interview residents and businesses there. Um, and then that'll conclude that part in Hancock County. Uh, they will remain in Ellsworth at the Moore Center until May twentieth, approximately May twentieth, before that deadline approach. Towns also have a May twentieth deadline now to apply for damages that they experienced as a result of the January storm.
And tho- those applications flow through your office, is that?
Partly. So when the storms, when storms first occur, the public is encouraged by the state, by the main emergency management agency and the federal government to report their damages online or by calling two-one-one or- or- or those means. That is not an application for assistance. That is merely assisting the state determine the number and the level of financial damages that have occurred. The burden remains on the individual or the business or the town to then formally file and submit an application for assistance. And that is the process that's underway now. There may be other assistance that Hancock County is eligible for. I copied you on some correspondence I had with the state of trying to pursue additional federal resources that may be available to us. Uh, the state has some concerns whether they might be contradictory or, um, redundant to, uh, recent legislation. There is an act to support the fishing community and coastal communities on storm damages. I- I have a different opinion on that. I- I- I think that it is only complimentary, not necessarily competitive in that anyway, so. I see it aggressively pursuing. Thank you for your time, commissioners, appreciate it. Thank you for signing those letters.
I might qualify. First up, I'd like to address the, uh, approval of the higher Almond Dina patrol deputy at step twelve C. Uh, approval of the higher Almond Dina patrol deputy at step twelve C using, uh, fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from three zero one zero dash ten, SO officer bio funds, ten thousand from seven zero dash two seven five officer bio five twenty-two four and thirteen thousand six cent, uh, thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars from reserve. Three zero one four dash zero one radios for the necessary thirty-seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollar bio. As discussed in an earlier meeting this year. That file was reduced due to waiting until certain.
Several. Second. Wasn't it needed previously? I thought somebody told us that you had the four blue pins. Is that correct?
Uh, and that time, we did, we had four.
Well. All of those blue pins require Academy payments or any of them beyond the five?
Uh, I don't have the numbers directly in front of me. I know that at least, uh, at- at minimum, one other, uh, did have a bio. There was, uh, two that had submitted an application that were from out of state. Um, and at the time, in interviews, we did not receive those applications of that. Uh, this individual currently works for Buck's Department, he resides in.
Yeah. No, but we're buying out from Bucksport.
Yes.
That's.
Yes.
Okay, and also, how soon will this be happening?
Uh, so it's start eight, we mentioned.
May twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, because we need to do a transfer sheet, it's part of the process, so I need to put that through probably on the next meeting before we have the money in place to pay for it, so.
So is my motion appropriate?
Yeah.
And then we'll just need to approve the transfer.
Yes.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
In regards to the next topic related to my question, it's just a few numbers.
Just to type it, I'm just wondering, gentlemen, in light of lieutenant this morning, hoping to get sometimes hoping to get additional troopers for that, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just let the, yes, so get this new officer in and round out the sections. He has four, four sections, and we'll round up the sections. His back is full staffed, as we know it now. Let him get everybody on going, and let's see if, what, what results from the lieutenant in the next two, three months. And, uh, then we can revisit this depending upon bandits, I guess, from lieutenant.
I'm not opposed to that, I'd like to hear is, uh.
If I may, I would like to justify, regardless of state police polishing, obviously I'd like to see it continue there. Uh, regardless of that, they can explain based on the calls for service, uh, how I would say its position is justified.
And the interesting part, because I remember we talked about this certain budget time, and I had the same wonder then that I do now is how we're gonna pay for it. Still have. Uh, that's still on my mind, but somewhat of a plan then, so.
So, what I'd like to bring to your attention, as it, as it stands right now, with call sharing, state police, uh, the document I just gave you is just a simple, um, calls for service numbers that I had, uh, put together with the assistance of Director Connery and dispatcher, uh, means yesterday to build, put in context, uh, the need for the additional position. Now, as you will see back in twenty-ten, we had effectively ten patrol deputies to include tennis detectives and the guys actually working the road. Uh, that year for service or for calls for service, the sheriff's office, you know, four thousand seven hundred forty-six calls. Works out to one hundred and seventy-four calls a day. Uh, in twenty-fifteen, we grew in positions, and at that time, we had thirteen deputies assigned to the road. We had one that works out to uh, four hundred and twelve calls for service per deputy. In twenty-nineteen, we grew to fourteen deputies of the position. Again, we averaged three hundred and eighty-two calls per deputy. Uh, twenty sixteen deputies, three hundred and seventy-eight calls. Twenty twenty-one, seventeen deputies, three hundred and eighty-seven calls per deputy. Twenty twenty-two, eighteen deputies, three hundred and fifty-nine average calls per deputy. We'll see a significant increase in twenty-twenty-three, seventeen deputies, although one was not filled. We averaged four hundred and fifty-seven calls per deputy. Now, if you go down and just below that, looking bold, you'll see that even at full staff with the position that we just approved, with eighteen deputies working the road, we're working average of four hundred and thirty-one calls per service per deputy. This would be the highest number of calls handled by or per deputy since twenty-fifteen, or dating back to twenty-fifteen, where it was still higher, the only higher year. Uh, would be back in twenty-ten. With this additional position, that would bring the average amount of calls down per deputy to four hundred and nine, which, as you can see, the only other year that would have surpassed that by three calls would have been twenty-fifteen. The- the reason that I ask for this additional position is currently right now, where four sections, as Commissioner Clark just referenced. Out of those four, with the approval of the position that we just had proposed, two of those four have four deputies. Section, one section has three, and one section I consider to have three because that fourth is made up of an airport uh, position, so that effectively, that fourth position is not working the real end of the call when they're tied up at the airport.
That's a part-time deputy or a full-time deputy?
That is a full-time deputy, uh, specifically due to throughout, uh, when they consider their off-season in the airport, there's three flights for during the summer months, uh, where their peak season, they call it, it's like from June to October, it's a twelve-hour day, all day of the flights.
He's not on the road or in that area.
Correct.
On the road. That helps.
Correct. So with this additional, uh, deputies position that I'm proposing, it would, uh, drop the calls for service down to an average of four hundred and nine per deputy. It would also allow three out of the four sections to have four road deputies with the other section having four on paper, but like I mentioned, one of them being specifically assigned to the airport. Uh, this need is outlined, uh, not only in calls for service, but also in our mission to provide the best, uh, coverage for the county. It would allow us, uh, in distances like we have now currently where a deputy is out on medical leave and other ones in the academy, it would allow us to meet our contract obligations during those times, which we currently are not able to do to the fullest extent. And those towns have been, uh, gracious enough to basically say, work what you can. As, as we go, we understand staffing issues that you were, uh, facing. With that being said, uh, that's, that's where we currently stand as far as calls for service. I would ask for the additional position. It would significantly help our staffing on the road. It would help us, uh, fulfill our contract obligations. It would better prepare us, uh, for times when people are out of work, whether that's vacation, medical leave, somebody's in the academy or training, we wouldn't have to fill as many overtime shifts. It would also allow us that additional deputy for, as, um, Lieutenant Johnson from the state police had said, you know, for the time being, their, uh, status quo is working slots two. As we discussed, it effectively splits us half of the time, so it allows our, an additional deputy to be working on that section that would otherwise make sure, to provide that, that backup to be a little bit closer than maybe, you know, a sixty, seventy minute drive. But regardless of the call sharing, if that were to continue, I believe that I've illustrated, uh, the need for that additional position simply based on the calls for service.
Well, you know, for our data, if you simply look at the number of calls they received in twenty-three, and you send, never mind the chief deputy's payment call, never mind the lieutenant's, never mind the deputy's, you sign all of those to the four sections. Then if there had been sergeant and three working section, they would have had an average in a ten-hour shift, two and three water calls per shift. Less than one every three hours, and if there had been three working, it would have been three and two-thirds of calls per ten-hour shift, roughly, you know, one every three hours, two and a half hours. But I can tell you from experience, there is no way to objectively say how many offices you need to cover. A good example is, is that the city goes with the same size of the private, yes, oh, but you know, we've got seventy-five hundred population, but because of the county seat, because of the gateway to academia and whatnot, that you can't compare the two agencies regardless of how many they had and why they had that many, so. There's really no way for us to objectively, there's no scale, there's no room for found, no way for us to know how many they need to answer the calls. And I think the best way is to slowly give them additional staff people until we feel comfortable that they have adequate staffing. Again, I think by getting them back to full staff is, you know, that we watch that, we watch the numbers, we watch the activity, and whatever else is going on, state police and we move very slowly towards. Add these more people because that's not just a one-time thing, it's, that's forever.
With all the respect, Commissioner Clark, uh, you know, at the end of the year, the budget positions that were put in by the budget committee that were in cut, what we were told is once we go up to full staff, come back and ask for that additional position. So, that is what we are doing. I think that the calls for service, uh, like I said, certainly justified. I think that is the way to be able to do this, to show exactly, okay, how many on average calls for service are being handled per deputy. The one thing that I would bring to your attention is, is in regards to saying, wow, that breaks out to an average of, you know, one call every two hours or three hours or whatnot, is that a lot of these calls with only two detectives, our detectives handle primarily DHHS referrals, sex crimes, things like that. So when your burglary comes in, or maybe your aggravated assault, your TV, that's gonna require additional time, resources, invested in investigating that case, we have our road deputies doing that. So that one call put on by a deputy for six hours or whatnot. So I think the objective way to do that is to simply look at calls for service, what's the average over the lifespan, um, back from when Commissioner Clark was sheriff all the way to present. And so, with that being said, you clearly look at how many calls on average are the patrol deputy handled. With the additional deputy position that I am requesting, that average would be for twenty-twenty-three, four hundred and nine calls. Like I said, that would be the highest average number of calls per deputy since twenty-fifteen, and I think that it certainly justifies it, and we're doing exactly as requested. Going full staff, come back, asking for that additional position.
So where would we come up with?
Well, that's, that was my question then, and that was my effort then, and but, you know, boys, they're doing exactly what we asked them to do.
Well, if you go back and listen to that tape or whatnot, the deal was that we're going to give you additional officers. And if you want more, come back to us at some point, just look at the situation, and that's what we're doing here today. There was no promise of giving you an additional officer. There was a promise that we would entertain requests, and that's what we're doing today, but we're not ready to hire an additional deputy, and we're not ready to talk about where that money would come from.
Well. Yeah, I- I- I didn't, I didn't state the word, promise to me, I'm just saying. Everyone, what we asked this to do was come back and talk about it, and my feeling is still the same. Whether I agree with it or not, it's almost, but let's say that I did. Where, how are we gonna pay for it? Is there, is there any? I know what I have solved today, but it would be nice to have some thoughts.
Well, and I think it's pretty true, because it depends on when, which means close the balance, what's the situation? You know, staffing at the sheriff's department is still somewhat precarious. I'm gonna talk about it in the meeting. Dakota knows that he still has, he still is walking on travel family with regards to stabilizing the comings and goings. It's the problem, I mean, so let's watch how this plays out. And today is not the day for us to be telling them, we can give you another person, we'll find a funding somewhere in the world.
Commissioner Clark, I mean, with all due, with all respect, you know, staffing at sheriff's office, you haven't been down to sheriff's office for a number of years, I think to make comments about people coming and going in retirements is, and quite frankly, I think that. and quite frankly, I think that, as you said yourself, the people that are going to know our staffing is the best are the ones that are currently there. That is why in presenting this information, we have garnered interest over the last few months from blueprints, which is something that we haven't done in the past. To me, that means that we're moving in a good direction, we're getting the interest from certified officers, which is something that we have not had the luxury of in the same quantity in years past. So, you know, in regards to this position that I'm asking for, there is another blueprint certified officer that would be willing and happy and moving to the county that way on today, if I told him he had a position. I'm coming to you simply, as Commissioner, uh Farady had stated, doing exactly as you asked. I think that, you know, when you talk about not being objective, other than simply providing the data and stats, I don't know how more objective information can simply be given.
So if you have somebody, you think you had someone?
Yes.
Interested, right? So this, the person that we're contemplating, yeah, are we also going to do a buyout?
So there is a buyout for them, uh a, I believe it is in the tune of twenty-seven thousand. So it is, it is cheaper uh than the buyout we just we considered. Uh with that being said, they are initially from the Brooklyn, Brooklyn, Blueville area. They're currently within Arlington, are in the process of moving to Bucksford, like to back down towards the slot one area eventually. I think that there would be a great addition to Sheriff's Office, especially geographic.
Sure, sure. I'm just going to say that when Dakota talks about the numbers of complaints, this goes back to, I'll refer back to the state police. One of the reasons they're changing their schedules and those types of things is, is a thing called quality of life, that they know that they were working at their um, their troopers too much, and that they didn't have any actual life other than working. We're working to, the last year saw, my eyes have been open for a lot of those types of things. And that we need to start taking care of our deputies that are working here. We can't work them and grind them down and then all of a sudden throw them away. No, that doesn't work. Their people, I have a young staff there in my patrol, they're starting families. We have an obligation when we employ them to make sure that they, their needs are taken and that they have their time off, and that they don't just live for the Sheriff's Office. So that is another reason why adding this other person is going to help us get to there. We don't know where the state police is, and we are still negotiating with them. How well that works out, I don't know. But, you know, as Lieutenant said, Colonel himself and his major are coming up here next week, and we're going to sit down and try to ask this out. You know, we talk about giving away one slot permanent, and I'm not in favor of that, and I'm not really agreed with that. Uh we had that discussion. Slot three is still part of Hancock County, I'm the sheriff of Hancock County, and I owe it to them that, that they see a deputy down there. Now, it may not be every day, and it may not be every week, but they have the same, their tax dollars just as valuable as the tax dollars somewhere else. And we could have had this discussion, but sometimes nobody wants to talk to me about. I've offered and don't have the opportunity to talk about these kinds of things instead of wasting time in meetings and doing this, dragging these meetings out. A lot of these discussions could have been had, could have been taken care of prior to these meetings. But the refusal of uh, of uh people not wanting to have that conversation, that goes back to why we have to beg for everything we get from the Sheriff's Office.
My question is still, how do we pay for it? Um is my question, back to the budget.
This was stated. Uh if I may, very great, I just, I guess what I'm, my request here is to advertise this to feel that, I mean, obviously, I understand there are some uh functions that would need to be figured out as far as the funding of that position, I fully understand. But honestly, that's above my head, I'm, I'm glad that. With that being said, you know, I'm asking for the commission to uh advertise it as additional, uh to interview additional people, to, if you guys are on board with the position, obviously with the contingency of finding the funding, and I would uh come back to the, with the name to hire.
Sure.
Yeah, I just going to say, I, you know, I, that's what he's asking for, is get permission to do that. Who knows, a lieutenant that we don't have to pay for may come in if we have a task of that. And I have no problem sitting down with Michael and saying, hey, Michael, how can we figure this out? The, it's impossible to do that and coming back.
The last thing I would add is that these numbers uh that I presented you with, this is with call sharing. This is, these are the numbers per deputy with call sharing, and it illustrates our need for an additional deputy. So obviously, you know, if we went away from call sharing, those numbers would certainly go up, but this is with call sharing. I, I think that it would certainly be advantageous for us to take that step uh into the, in that direction.
So my question is from Michael. Um, not sure I like the notion of advertising for a position that doesn't exist. But, but I, I, I fully understand, you know, and it had, it had communities that are I mean, it seems like what should happen is that conversation take place between the Sheriff's Department and you. See if we can devise a plan and then advertise. To me, that would be
To me, and it's nothing against holding out this, but you gotta, you gotta know how you're going to pay for something. I don't think that's fair, the people that are applying. I mean, if there really isn't a likelihood that this is going to happen whenever, then you don't want to set somebody up to get motioned. And certainly, you wouldn't be coming back to request the approval till after you've made some type of offer to them, and that doesn't seem fair either, so.
When you're starting with a presumption though, that you don't hire somebody, and I think that's the first issue that we need to
Well, no, I'm not starting with that presumption.
Say, if you find funding, you go ahead and solicit for this, come back, tell us who you got, greater time was a done deal. I'm saying that at this point, we should not be talking about additional staffing. There are issues in place here that affect whether or not the Sheriff's Department truly needs more people. We need to let those things play out a little at a time here. Just let him hire a guy this morning, get him on board.
Well, we already did.
Right, let him get the guy on board, get things under control, if you will, get him acclimated, whatever's going to happen and whatnot, see where the state police call sharing agreement is coming from, and then make that decision. That's a, that's a tough decision, you know, it doesn't much to hire another person.
It is a tough decision, but we, you know, we've heard from a community, and I've heard from other communities that they feel that they're whole and they have a problem and
Well, but maybe there's different ways of addressing the problem, it's not just simply hiring more people. Well, and the, the fact that the sheriff is unwilling to, to take some drastic measures here to get the public served by both agencies and whatnot, because he believes that you'll give him more people if he doesn't.
I'm not stating that. I'm just stating that there should be a plan. If, if we do it, we should have a plan. I mean, I, I think the first step is for the Sheriff's Department to sit down with the county administrator, and if this is the path that we're going to take, and it's a if, it's a big if, I understand your points wholeheartedly, but I also understand the points that are being made from some of these other communities. But I, I, I think there needs to be a plan before we advertise. And that plan is not making the decision on whether we do it or not, it's just a plan if we do it.
Because every time it ends, it's not just that you're adding payroll. It's a back-to-back session of cruisers, and it also happens, it's just that it's still, it's not just a lot.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I think that Mr. Clark has a vendetta against the Sheriff's Department. Every time something comes up, he wants to argue with it. I'm sorry, but I think that's unacceptable as the commissioner. You was the previous sheriff, and you know how hard it is and such. I just think there's something not right here, with you arguing over everything with it.
I'm not going to change my position representing the taxpayers of this county.
I, I agree with you on that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Oh, you two can't see it, but can't see it.
Oh, sorry. That's okay. Um, you know, like I said in the beginning of my, you know, speech, we've got a sixty percent increase in crime in the area. I mean, I'm just as cognizant of what you guys are on a budget. But, you know, and when I chase Mr. Johnson or Lieutenant, whatever he is, open the door. I mean, I told him, I said, you know, we're willing to engage our peninsula, Blue Hill Peninsula of town, of slot one, because we're not getting coverage that we need, and we've got egregious crime statistics going on. And I mean, and I think all of us, and I'm sure the, the different towns around are willing to sit down with you and get some sort of conversation going or a plan. How do we address this? You know, all we want is a fair shake in this, but, you know, the county needs to be proactive, the towns need to be proactive, because we will not have good communities and attract business and economic development, everything else that we need. With the statistic, if it keeps going, we need that police presence on both ends, not just night patrols or whatever. And I mean, and he, uh, Mr. Johnson, he agreed to sit down with our towns. I hope you guys do, because this needs to be addressed. We need that police presence. If we don't, then it's just going to have, we're going to have more severe repercussions that we're having now, whether stuff in our schools, domestic violence, everything else, so we need a fair shake in this. And I mean, if you need to figure out in your budget where you've got funds, hand it over to me, because I can go through that with climate control. I can give you that pathway, okay?
You also are aware, though, that there are certain procedures and processes when it comes to budgets.
I understand, I understand.
The time to have solved this obviously would have been during the budget time period when there's flexibility.
But the budget committee didn't get that chance to bite on it, it got overripped, didn't it?
Flexibility.
And that legislature, that county needs to go in and change the process.
Arguing with not this money, I'm just saying it's not as simple as what you stated.
I understand that.
Procedures and rules that guys will be have to do.
Exactly.
People, Helen, I'm probably the least experienced in this rule. But I just have a, a question of compromise. Does your budget run July first, June thirtieth, does it run a calendar year? What does it run?
Calendar.
A calendar year, okay. So uh the next chance to put this in a budget for discussion would be January, is that, is that fair to talk about?
That's a no number for funding.
Right, okay, but it's, it's January. So, so maybe the compromise would be to uh, maybe there's many opportunities to compromise, but if it, if it didn't muster that during the budget process, I don't think we have to put it to bed that it can ever happen, can we focus on January first?
Well, my feeling is this. I don't think we're at a point where we can go out and advertise just for some of the, just for the reasons Michael left in. You know, and that one, but I would want for that conversation to happen between Sheriff's Department and Michael. Maybe there's a plan, maybe, maybe we can do it, maybe we should do it, maybe we're going to discover we can't do it. You know, I, I, but I just, I would at least like that, I'd like that information. You know, I, I, I don't think I'm ready to make a decision on that now, but I think we need to talk about it.
We may have some answers for you after our meeting next day, Commissioner. Then going to be here, and I would welcome one of you gentlemen, wish to participate in that conversation.
Well, I think it's more important that, that the administrator.
Or, or the county administrator, I'm sorry, yes, Michael.
All right. Um, slightly, uh, to, uh, I would like you guys to get together to try to figure out how we pay for it. We're in April now. It would be kind of nice, to be honest, if it didn't happen until we get to, we only have a pay for half a year. Uh, so to me, that seems to be somewhat of a compromise, uh, but maybe we can get together and start looking at the numbers. Yeah, I think that's what we should see.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just don't think there's an actual item, but, you know, I, I think we need to start a conversation, especially when we're getting, you know, we have one community here that, that's, you know, sort of giving us an outcry, but others are also, and, you know, all you got to do is read the newspaper or read what's happening out there. It's not good.
All right, now that we've gone through all the love fest parts, let's go to the contentious one. Patrol vehicles.
All right, hi. In regards to that, I know you guys have, um, we, I spoke in front of you multiple times regarding that proposal. Uh, the only additional info that I would give to you today is I just talked to the the Leo at work this morning, just to confirm availability. Um, he has all of them spoken for, with the exception of six, so um, with that being said, he says he has, out of those six, he said he has four with our names on it now, depending on what happens at this meeting. Um, if it doesn't go through, then he said he has other agencies that want them. So that's the only update I would provide. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Well, we have really three issues here we need to discuss, understand, and come to some resolution. The first one, of course, we discussed in length, is, is how many vehicles have we purchased? What kind of vehicles have we moved up? And I still contend that the sheriff, chief deputy, lieutenants, and detectives have been well served by passenger cab vehicles. There have never been an incident, unions not screening for no safety vehicles, the insurance company, our insurance company isn't demanding yet. There was, there was no publication, you know, declaring that we should have, you know. And although we can agree that certified police vehicles handle that and are durable, it's not necessary, I believe, for the Sheriff's Department to assign those to those six positions. And on top of that, if you look and take advantage of the rebates as they come along and whatnot, it's possible that we can, can at the optimum time, that we can buy a super passenger vehicle for these six positions. At somewhere today, that was today, whatnot, someone named 46 to forty-seven thousand dollars, transfer the, the equipment that is available from the one you're retiring and getting rid of to that vehicle, then assign, uh, install new, some new equipment specific to that vehicle, a few blue lights and whatever, and basically you've got a serviceable vehicle for those six positions, someone named 50,000 dollars. Now, under the plan the Sheriff's Department is proposing, a certified police vehicle unmarked is sixty-eight thousand dollars. Gentlemen, that's eighteen thousand dollars more for a certified police vehicle unmarked than it would be for a passenger cab vehicle and giving six of those, you're talking about a hundred and eight thousand dollars over the life of those six vehicles to purchase it. That's a lot of money.
Uh, it, it is, but you're comparing a fully outfitted one with one
No, the fully outfitted one is seventy-three.
No, whether it's outmarked or unmarked, it still needs to be outfitted, is my understanding correct?
And the other thing that I would bring to your attention is, you know, the, the union, you're right, union is not out trying for this. They are, but we had, we had taken the position that we wanted to resolve this without going through the union or any grievances or anything like that, be able to bring it to you guys, do it this way rather than, you know, bring that up. With that, with the other remarks in mind, you know, as far as the six uh positions that Commissioner Clark referenced, um, you know, in the last meeting, uh, April ninth, with the sheriff's morning, Commissioner Clark himself acknowledged that they're a safer vehicle, the town's. With that being said, Commissioner Clark also reached out in the meantime since that last meeting and said that he had welcomed the decision that him and I
Wait, just a minute, Dakota, that was a package deal between you and I, you rejected the package, those things are off the table. I'm not agreeing to any of those. I have the floor here, I have the floor, and I don't want to be on the ground, I want to go through
You were speaking to the other commissioners.
No, I wasn't, I was speaking between you and I, as you're speaking for the uh, the department. Now, again, I do not believe there's any need for us to be buying certified police vehicles and spending a hundred and eight thousand dollars in taxpayer money to buy those cars. The second issue that comes to mind here is, is that despite the fact that we're going to give Island Tech Service a check, and they're going to turn around and hand it to work, bottom line is, technically, that title that we're going to get from work is going to say that work is the seller and Hancock County is the buyer. And so technically, the only service that ITS is going to provide is providing and installing the equipment on the vehicle. Now, over the years, we have recognized Brown's Communication as the sole source for providing and installing equipment, because they're the only shop in Hancock County, and that's where equipment because they're the only shop in Hancock County and that's where the SO would go if they had a problem with that equipment. Once they move to Belkens County where there are several shops out there who are able to provide and install Island Tech does not have that same, uh, sole source status that Brown's had in Hancock County. And this is going to be subject to like competitive bidding because it's over twenty-five month. All you may wait at the last meeting and suffice it to file a motion telling the sheriff's department that they need to get back to a competitive bidding processes when they're doing work. Now, lastly, in this issue is the sheriff's department is proposing taking three vehicles off the primary use and making them spares. One of those vehicles has less than eighty thousand, the other one has a, the others two have a little more than eighty thousand. Now, where part of is going to, uh, getting those vehicles next month. Giving a month or six weeks to get them equipped. Those vehicles are gonna be ready to go by July first. By July first, the three cruisers we're talking about is gonna have somewhere a little eighty thousand, the other two are gonna have less than ninety thousand. Which is far less than the traditional mileage that we have insisted upon over the years and whatnot. And John made a point at the last meeting, whatnot, the more expensive these vehicles get, the longer we should be keeping. And so we should be having these vehicles stay on primary use until well over a hundred thousand miles before we remove them from the primary use and, uh, getting the value out of the vehicle. Because even at two hundred, the sheriff said over a hundred thousand on this data, we still got twelve, thirteen thousand trade in. So we're still getting competitive trading or getting competitive use. Given all that, I'm gonna make a motion that we inform the sheriff that we no longer want to pay for certified police vehicles for the sheriff, chief deputy, lieutenants, and detectives. Furthermore, that we expect that he'll put between a hundred and a hundred and ten thousand miles on his vehicle before he takes him off primary use.
Commissions.
I have a motion on, I have a motion on forward.
Commissioner Clark, you don't want me to talk about.
I want you follow process.
Okay.
I motion on the forward, even seconded for a draw.
Sit down.
You guys.
Okay. I am, here's where I am. I agree with four vehicles. I agree with Chevy Tahoe PPDs. I have no problem. The problem I have, and I've had, uh, some time, and quite frankly, the letter that we got from, from Bailey McKenzie illustrates this for me, is that we need to go by purchasing policy. Not only are we required to do it by laws, we're gonna be talking about, you know, that, a few items down here. Uh, so to me, that, that's what needs to go, needs to back. It may mean that we may lose these four. But at least we will be replacing four vehicles like we said we were gonna. It may mean we get them a little later, but I think we need to stick to the pulse. We're bound by, by law. Uh, you know, we've been doing things under sole source, but quite frankly, I'm not sure that we've been doing that correctly based on the reading that Michael gave us. So uh, to me, it's, it's clear that we need to go through that process. And I'd make a motion that, that, uh, I'd be prepared to make a motion that we, you know, move ahead with, uh, purchasing four Tahoe cruisers for twenty twenty-four. And it be accomplished using county's purchasing policy. Uh, I, I understand that we might save a few thousand by going to passenger vehicles. I don't quite honestly feel insignificant because in my estimation, we're comparing non. I can't remember if I heard it correctly here. We're, we're, uh, we're dealing with a fully outfitted vehicle versus a not fully outfitted passenger. And, you know, and, and just using the numbers that we have, and I know that to me, we're no more than three or five thousand dollars difference between the two. For me, I think that's worth having the flexibility of, you know, being able to shift vehicles that we have to. All having the same, uh, platform, all those things. And I understand the platform changes all the time. Uh, I'm okay with the four vehicles. I'm okay with this specific model. I just think it needs to go through the purchasing policy.
The, the one that you just approved, we do have a, a vehicle.
Yeah, you have a vehicle for, for being fully, you have vehicles for being fully staffed. Right?
Correct.
And even if we were to offer, even if we were to increase the number, you would just have to go down spare, wouldn't necessarily.
That would be my plan, in order to mitigate the expenses of that additional position is, we go down spare at least. At least for the current times, you know, obviously, four spares is a, is a working number for us. So I'd like to try to get back up to that point, you know, eventually, whether that's just we don't sell a spare, you know, we retain one a year. Uh, but yes, that initially that would be my plan to mitigate the upfront cost of that additional position if we could ask.
So I'm not reading these, uh, there's no more of these numbers, right?
Nope, everything's right.
If you buy four, you're retiring. What's, what's the one? You identified three cruisers. What's the one?
It was, uh, unit ninety, it was the vehicles that I highlighted, uh, in the polls that I provided. It would be unit ninety-four, unit two fourteen, unit oh eight, and unit twenty-one. It's a Chevy Silverado that has a hundred and, almost two thousand miles on it. Um, twenty twenty-one Chevy Tahoe, twenty twenty Chevy Silverado, and a twenty twenty, uh, Ford Explorer.
And those are the ones that were provided to me?
Yes.
So, so there's only one, so right now there's four in store. I mean, we've got nothing to say.
They'd be retired and transitioned to spares. They still be transitioned to spares with the exception of the uh, unit ninety-two, the unmarked Chevy Silverado. That one, uh, I would propose to be sold. It doesn't serve the same purposes as that spare because that currently in mind doesn't have the same equipment for a patrol deputy to be able to do, uh, their job. It just has less.
So I'm gonna make this motion. I'm gonna move that we, uh, that purchase of four new Chevy Tahoe PPD cruisers for twenty twenty-four be accomplished using county's purchasing policy. Period. And the reason I'm making that identifies the vehicles. And says we're gonna do it this year, and then we're gonna send it through the purchasing policy. I know that it may, it may jeopardize these four, but hopefully through the policy, you'll, you know, find some and, and. So that's my motion. Well, here's why I say fours. We're still able to use, uh, ARPA funds. We need to set up, you know, we, given the math, and actually, we, I think that was worked out during the budgeting process. We figured out that you need it to be four per year, and sometimes it needed to be five or one year, year to be five. That's why I'm trying to do this. If we just do half or two, then that would probably work, you know, operationally, but it's gonna catch up with us. And it's gonna catch up to us on the taxpayers' dime not using ARPA.
Right, yeah. Past meeting, I believe, the commissioners, when we discussed the last year, we were told to come back and plan on asking to replace four or five every year. So that we didn't run into the same scenario. Basically, snowballing over the years and then happening that for a large.
And that's what was discussed during the budget.
I, my concerns are the same as before. To me, you guys just need to track, you need to get more miles out of cars. I know that sense. Kind of harsh, but to me, it's like, just like in a family. Times get tough and cars and vehicles get more and you have to drive them more. Yeah, yeah, there's gotta be more repairs, but to me, I'm sure, I'm convinced that increased repair costs are gonna make enough financial effects. Just from looking at how much has gone out. But to me, more time. So I'll stay at the tip.
So my motion, uh, looks like it's gonna die, but I'll make this comment is that, I agree with you, John. I would hope that we do that when that we can soften that blow on taxpayers by front loading. That, that's, that's a very valid discussion. I just think it's a, it's, it makes more sense to do that, and I would agree to doing that if you didn't have a circle.
Well, let's stop me. Get more miles out of vehicles, you can add some vehicles, but replace it, and replace vehicles later on. They're gonna come on nine in January with, without the miles on it, you know, it's like you're, you're just putting it off. I'm not saying, when I buy two vehicles out of ARPA funds, I'm not gonna buy anymore. I'm saying right now, we're authorizing two vehicles to be bought. Who knows what could happen in October? Who knows? We also have even a clearer idea of how much money we have left of ARPA to spend. Yeah, so, looks like my mark.
So I'm just gonna say in the fall, who knows if anything's gonna be available or what the price is gonna be, because they won't be twenty twenty-fours, they'll be twenty twenty-fives. We know that there'll be an increase in price in there. These these are coming, and they've been reserved for us. Commissioner Clark's own proposal was, when we started talking vehicles by the time, that we should be purchasing five a year with the numbers of deputies that we have. So we have pared that down four. Realistically, my truck that I drive has eighty-nine thousand miles on it. By the time they get there, I'm gonna be low to mid-nineties with mine, but I'm gonna run mine another year out of respect for, for Commissioner Longbacker. But we're talking about the frontline vehicles and talking about, it almost sounds like we're cutting grounds out of, out of this conversation, whatnot. Unmarked vehicles, we can take those up the ground, but we bid the last time, fully equipped, striped vehicles. And that's what we got. That's how we got the deal of what we're purchasing now. And that's what we would do with the same thing. That way, we don't have to get the vehicle, bring it to Brown's and they install some of their stuff and take it back to Vanguard and get it striped up. All those costs have increased. So we're getting a package deal and it's ready to go. So it makes more sense to me to do it that way.
So I made a motion, and I'll have a second there, right? Okay. So Mr. Chair, you're, you're proposing that, uh, with you two, and so what's the plan? I'm just trying to.
Are you still gonna have to try and accomplish something?
Okay, so basically the same motion. Uh, again, I'm not clear on making this because I think we're just creating some heartache down the road. And when I say heartache, I mean expense, heartache down the road. Uh, but.
Can I just make a comment before you make your motion? So if it is the case that we are only able to get twenty twenty-fives, none of the equipment that we have will likely transfer over because that's supposed to be a new model year. So it, it's gonna be an even further incurred cost because of that. We're gonna buy all new equipment as opposed to transferring equipment from what we currently have to that new, the new model year.
And, and, and what was happening? This proposal, you were transferring some equipment, right?
It was not, and simply due to the fact that the cruisers that both transitioned to spare.
We're not the same.
It's from what is in the hand works. The one thing I would say, you know, in our experience, we found that often times they make like adaption kits or something like that. So some of it could be utilized, but there is some that likely would not transfer.
So again, my motion, like for got it for like a second, so try to accomplish what Mr. Longbacker is. I'm gonna, uh, move the purchase of two new Chevy Tahoe PPD cruisers for twenty twenty-four, be accomplished using county's purchasing policy.
Any other discussion, boys? Oh, that's interesting. Wow, there was something, sorry.
I'd just like to say I'm disappointed. I mean, the budget thing that we did out, we laid out the paths to purchase. Um, and the other thing is too, is, is, I mean, you know, I buy vehicles for our town too. Cloud trucks and stuff, and my five fifty, I know just exactly where that sweet spot is. And it's just before three years to get rid of that damn thing with warranty on it. So I can either buy it out for a straight sale, you know, or buy it with a dealer. And I don't keep it any more than that because every single time you get over a sudden amount is either tied up with some sort of problems, won't go, emissions, this, that, and everything else. And that is just tried and true. And I try and keep it in that sweet spot. My board is really happy because I used to run everything right into the ground and wonder why it costs all the time. I don't have that problem anymore.
I understand the point. I'm I'm just trying, I'm, I'm just trying to accomplish something here. I think that, you know, well, my motion is. I'm disappointed also that we are, we are, it's three of us.
Comments in favor?
We had somebody in the public saying that they don't know that your mic or where your mic isn't related to your face, but they can't.
Oh, it could be that too, huh?
Yeah.
But at least we're more comfortable.
Yeah, well, then it's, then after a while it gets cold.
For the next item.
Yes.
The next item, uh, to talk about is, uh, tasers. Looking at, uh, single source ones from Axon, the reason being is, as far as the taser market goes, I mean, it's, it's really, Axon is the, the taser manufacturer. Uh, with that being said, we've, uh, received a quote from them to replace tasers now. This quote, it's important to, uh, note that this does not solely reflect the sheriff's office. The jail also utilizes tasers. Uh, and this also replaces the jail's tasers in. Uh, with that being said, that quote was provided, uh, during the budget workshop. I also have, uh, additional copies of that. If you guys would like them or if you have it handy.
Give us a question right away. So, yeah, so, so this is a, this is not a purchase, this is a lease.
It is a, it is a five, the way that tasers transferred, uh, basically their sales, which it's like a new business is probably smart, is they end up going away from, you can buy our tasers to, you can lease our tasers. They do do it in five-year increments, and the reason for that is because they state that, well, after five years, they split the warranty up and they want to ensure that it's gonna be renewed. Uh, you can frontload that, so you can pay for it all upfront at one time. Uh, and then just know that five years on the road, you're gonna have to reconsider another proposal.
Yeah, so my first question is a lease and ARPA.
Well, this is the same as the seven A, seven C delay.
Exactly.
We're trying to confirm that answer. We may never be able to confirm the answer, so we may have to just make an educated guess and hope that they don't come back and counting, say you gotta pay back a thousand dollars, but at this point. Make an educated guess and hope that they don't come back accounting, say you gotta pay back a thousand dollars, but at this point, we don't have a definitive answer to say. Paying beyond the time period of. Would be allowed even though if you're front loading it down and paying for it all. Now was the issue that was created during the workshop and our consultant. Kitty Barbie is looking into it.
And the one thing that I would ask is, um, in regards to if it is something that ultimately ends up being tabled today. I do have um a taser instructor both uh for a taser and less lethal uh launches, which is the next item which. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but effectively it might be a more productive conversation for the purpose of actually presenting it really well together, just in two. Amounts or mine items, but. Uh, with that being said, you know, even if it is something that ends up being tabled today, I'd at least like to be able to have him speak on behalf of the tasers and less lethal launches while he is here so that. How you guys do have an understanding of what it is that we are actually asking for.
So. Again, my my. So tasers are not purchased anymore in apartments.
It's they transitioned uh Exxon to the lease program five years.
And there's all, you know, because. Having because of other items coming up later, now read laws surrounding purchases. Uh. There's there's only one manufacturer of tasers that are used in law enforcement.
I'm not really familiar with any other brands because the sole brand used for any agency I've ever interacted with is always only an Axon.
Okay, so uh. Me, the question is the lease purchase or the purchase. May I have no problem with there are, but the only question is the lease, right? I don't. Cause I.
Yeah, I mean, even paying. So the lease and the other thing, I mean, ultimately that's up to you. The lease doesn't put an extra dynamic on it, which is different than just paying in advance, but.
Yes.
He's indicated there agreeing to allow you to do that. So to a degree, I think there. The fine line, but that still doesn't mean it's the question whether or not it's allowing expenditure under our.
Yeah, so that is my first question. And the second question uh was this, uh if you. My guess is that if you pay for it all at once, we're paying the present value of it. They're not. We're just not lumping the payments. Yeah. I understand how a lease works, but if you pay everything upfront. You should be getting a better price than ten dollars a month, whatever. And and I think it's reflected, but I couldn't tell.
So my understanding uh on that note is that if you uh were to look at. Page one, it uh just says the total cost and then if you were uh by doing this.
So that that's like a hundred and forty five.
It is a hundred and forty five thousand nine hundred and sixty three dollars, not five hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty cents. Uh, if you go to page two, it breaks it down by years. Um, so you'll see that it's just the same amount yearly total. I don't know if that answers what you're asking.
It 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 sort of does, so uh so my point is that if we're paying it all now. We should be getting a discount because of the present value of the lease. Because money now is better than thirty thousand dollars a year. My guess is that this is a lease and that. They will, they would do that, but that was my only question.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe I I don't know. Um, that was just the the quote I was given, which basically told me you can do it by the pantry, pay it upfront if you'd like to do, you know, from that cost.
So my question is this. If we pay it upfront, what's the amount?
Uh, if we pay it upfront, the amount that I was giving was that one hundred and forty five. Hundred and forty five thousand five hundred ninety three dollars and sixty cents. The one thing that I would say is we do um currently have tasers at the sheriff's office like I'm wearing right now. Um, and the jail has some. Um, they would give us a credit for turning in our old tasers for thirty nine hundred dollars. So it's how much, but it is something off of that total amount. Uh, the tasers, the. Like their warranty speaks to generally speaking, five year lifespan. Ours are eight, nine years. They are failing or breaking.
Yeah.
They aren't even having.
No argument for me on whether you.
How many tasers is this for though?
So this is for thirty two. That encompasses both the sheriff's office and the jail's needs. And it allows us with a few working uh spares for the sheriff's office. I believe there's two working spares for the jail. Uh, in the event that uh one breaks or the jail decides they would like to staff another person with a taser on their shift. Um, they are under warranty, but there is a turnaround time in which. To get the taser back, so it is helpful to be able to have a couple spares.
So I feel like. I feel like I voted on tasers before. So.
We did.
I'm so just trying to understand. Like, cause I feel like you're saying, oh, yeah, there's some. I feel like. I've I've signed off on my tasers within the last couple of years and I just. We make sure.
Might have been for the jail.
Well, we did because we've only had them in the jail for a few years, so that might be what you're thinking about. That may be it. And a year, a couple of years ago, when we still had the ability to buy them, we did buy, we did purchase, I believe it was like. Maybe two or three at a time to keep up with additional staffing that we had approved or to replace some broken ones. Um, we just.
So. My, I have two questions. The first is uh. The Arpa question. Is the lease okay? The second is uh. And I think they'll understand this is what's the amount if we pay it today? Or or excuse me, first year, because if it's a lease. And it's a lease agreement. I'm pretty sure that they fall under the laws where. You've got a present value of that.
Yeah, I can go back and add.
So in other words, what would the price, so first is a big F. Can we do it? And if we can, if we, and the reason why I wanna do it all now is because we can do it under our button. Uh. And. What that amount is. I mean, I could actually probably figure it out. But I don't, you know, I don't know what the lease rate is and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Um, and so. You know, to speak in this regard, you know, I I do have a couple individuals from the jail and, you know, they wanted to touch on. Why the cases are important for them to utilize. I also have uh Corporal Barrio from Comstock County as well to. Explain, you know, what it is that we would be looking at purchasing, um, the benefit behind it and also the less lethal launches.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, at the risk of sound like obstructionist. Difference to a good friend from the era and and at the risk of the sheriff saying, I'm being one behind your back. In effort to try to find out more about this. Did some research myself. And. What I'm giving here is my lawyer Bobby, people be careful when.
They should have.
Well, also all information they should have themselves, but it's what is. It shows that the sheriff's department presently has twenty one tasers. And they have been purchased periodically, two or three at a time. Over the last eight years. And contrary to what's on this information sheet that says that they're. They have reached their going to on ten years old, reach that life expectancy. The oldest one here is is eight years and four months. They have five year warranty on them and half of them. Are less than five years. And still have. Warranties on those. And. Four of these are less than two years old. Now. First of all. Why do we need new tasers if we still have two years left on the existing one? And why are we getting rid of tasers that we just purchased a year ago? And paying the new ones? I also took the opportunity, if you look at the quotes from. Exxon. Of calling the salesman for Exxon. First and foremost, gentlemen. Exxon does not lease. There's no such thing. They do not have a lease. They don't have a lease. I was shocked. I talked with him. He said, no, we don't lease anything. We had a five year program. In five years, you own these, this equipment.
Those are zero buy.
It's it's.
Or a one dollar buy.
I don't know where where the term lease comes in.
Well, it says that here.
I know it, but when you talk to the salesman, he said, we don't lease, we sell. And. Here's the other thing that needs to be looked into. Is exactly what are we buying for a hundred and forty five thousand dollars because the. Taser seven is the. Device. That Exxon is proposing, the sheriff's department above. And Taser seven sells for nineteen hundred and fifty dollars a piece, less than two thousand dollars a piece. So it appears when he talks to me about what we're getting for a hundred and forty five thousand dollars is is we're getting. New tasers, new holsters, new cartridges, training. Warranty. Uh, there's even something about the. Representation for. I don't know, suits or something. I'm not even sure what that is. But what they're doing is just selling a program whereby. You're getting. Full. Service from. Exxon, not just the device. I mean, this is like buying. You know, you have a periodic. You buy states, frozen states from, you know, dealer or whatnot. They're gonna sell you a refrigerator. They're gonna sell you insurance and takes and brings down. You lose your power, lose it. That's what Exxon is is doing here. They're not selling just, they're not giving you just tasers. They're giving you. A full service type. Program. For five years. And at the end of five years, if you wanna take advantage of that program again, you can negotiate for another five years. But at the end of five years, you own. These tasers. And if you get involved in this program. You will. On day one. You will have no use left for any of the tasers that you presently have. I don't care how much he gives you, but we're going to be basically giving up tasers that we had spent money on for the past eight years. Buying and putting into use. And also here, it says that they need four or six or whatnot because of the. Four or five months to fill orders. Going into the salesmen and whatnot, they're able to keep a substantial number on stock. In emergency, they can be overnighted to the emergency, there is no delay. On top of that, they presently have, they're not making the X two, which is what the sheriff's department carries now, but they do have. What they consider to be eighteen months to twenty four months worth of stock to replace. Those that are under warranty. But after that, if they run out, the warranties are weakened. So there's no reason why the sheriff's department right now can't stay with the uh X twos that they presently have. Because A. Thinking this is the stock, the they're in stock and they can be gotten to them fairly soon. And second of all, they can, there's no tasers that are ten years old that need to be replaced.
So commissioners, in that regard, I'd just like to speak on that warranty that Commissioner Clark references, the ones that I'm proposing. They do have that five year warranty. I don't know if that's where Commissioner Clark drew these warranties from or not. When I called our taser instructor, who was Dan Hart, listens on the road PD. Uh, I asked them about the warranties of the ones that we did have broken to see if we could get them fixed to get by if we needed. He said that they are not under warranty. He said that when we purchase them, they do come with a one year warranty, but that we did not offer to purchase the five year warranty. So with that being said, uh, these ones, you know, twelve through twenty one are all over your whole, so in fact, they would not be under warranty. Uh, the other thing that I would touch on is that in regards to this lease program or you own it at the end. That is how it was explained to me, that it's a lease uh and at the end of five years, you can choose to do um. What you wanna, whatever you decide. Uh. In regards to that whole bundle package, uh, those cartridges, the holsters, the training, the certifications. That's all things that are necessary in order to use tasers. It's nice to be able to just go buy a taser, but you still need the training. You still need the training cartridges. You need the cartridges to effectively be be able to even use the taser. Um, and the other thing outside of that, which I'll have Corporal uh Barry touch on here is. My understanding is that these tasers also come with a docking station, so you need a docking station for the tasers for the batteries and things like that. But I'll uh, I'll just redirect here to Corporal Barry so that he can actually explain. He has far more knowledge as far as the tasers go. He's an instructor. Um, they acquired them from Comstock County, so he has experience utilizing them. Um, but I'll I'll refer to him to explain actually what it is.
Morning commissioners. Appreciate your time. Um, my name is Ken Berry. I am a corporal from Comstock County. I have all years of experience in law enforcement. I'm nine or ten years as a taser instructor. Um, listening to some of the stuff that you guys are talking about, the importance behind this program that he's talking about. Uh, and the taser seven itself is they're a hundred percent right. There is a warranty on these tasers, the docking stations, the cartridges, the batteries, everything in between. Um, I can speak on, I'm not a salesman for Axon. I'm not gonna pay to be here. I don't care about their profit margins. I'm gonna speak on Comstock County, our experience with that. What Axon provides. Um, like Lieutenant, the police said every year uh their deputies have to go through. Um, order them to get recertified on taser. It's the primary leader in electronic weapons. Um. Uh, PowerPoint courses and then they have to deploy minimally cartridges during training scenarios. Uh, we opt into that five year program. Uh. And I I can say they've been a great company to work with so far. We've had tasers break. Uh, cartridges fail, we've had batteries fail. Um, during this program, I've been uh able to send all these items back to Axon. Month to two turnaround, I'm getting everything back and that's part of that five year program that we opted into. Um, they send us every year cartridges for trainings that we need to do every single year. We uh get extra cartridges for actual field deployments. Uh, the docking station and battery. So what's very unique about the taser seven, um, part of this program is uh they have a docking station. These are smart weapons. You have to update them. Okay. Uh, you have to update these things. They have software updates. Uh, with their current X twos, the only way to do that is they have to come into the office. Plug in. Plug in individually every single taser, download it into a computer. Our docking say, and you also have to buy, these are not, my knowledge, X two do not have rechargeable batteries. These are rechargeable batteries as well as we dock them and upload all the data that you need from our deployments, update software and all that. Axon also, if you're following within their uh five year warranties. Uh, they provide in cases of use of force with questions about taser uh as used, so for example. Um, if if an agency is sued in reference to the. Taser, the excessive force of taser, as long as it's from the policy and guidelines of Axon. Axon does have teams of lawyers, doctors, scientists that typically will come in. Assuming that's the product, again, they're they're a company, they're a private company trying to make money. They don't own their product. They have represented authors in the past in these use of forces uh to talk about the safety of taser. Uh. I can speak on the difference between and Lieutenant, would you ever hand out?
No, you won't.
So I can speak on, and you can see the visual reference, uh commissioners. Um, the difference between the taser seven and the taser X two. Uh. And again. Not selling these. I I don't. I don't make any money off this. I came here for free because some of my best friends work for this agency. And I wanna make sure that they're safe and safe as well as possible. And you see on the very first photo here, the taser X seven is what they're requesting is what we carry. That's how they deploy. That's how they shoot out. Below the that X seven is the taser X two, which Hancock County is currently carrying. You can see the difference in the way the probes deploy. The top probes are the taser sevens are much uh more narrow, sorry, much stricter. They deploy with more accuracy. They deploy at a higher pulse rate than the X two. As you can see, the X two kind of shoots out and there's not as much accuracy. Which leads to long failed deployments. On to the second page, the X sevens. You can see the cartridges right here. These are built differently than the X twos, the design that if they hit a person. But they will not break away while the person falls or rolls around on the ground, unlike the X twos, which typically happens. And they deliver twenty two volts per second unless you have to deploy a second probe at forty four volts in a second. So uh in our experience, these have been great. We have used them in incidents. I've. Seen, I've used the taser X twenty six Ps, which are slowly off of this, and uh I've seen these taser X sevens. You we have a much higher accuracy rate, success rate of these X sevens. Uh, the program has been great for us and very responsive with Axon. And like I said, every year it kind of takes the. And like I said, every year, it kind of takes the guessing game out of it, they send us what we need in exchange, uh, Exxon, uh, in exchange for all our, uh, payments to them. So is there any questions I can give on? Maybe the program itself, yeah, I don't have the prices in front of me, but Hancock requesting, um, but the program itself, the training requirements and the taser possibly.
Excuse me, there are a number of agencies who have their own training officers within the agency that takes care of it, and is training, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we have a training sergeant, if that's what you're talking, yes, sir.
I mean, other agencies have tasers, they have, they have officers within the department who are, who are capable of giving the training to their.
Yes, you, you have to be certified instructor to act right, which is the parent company and taser.
This to me, gentlemen, is just like the reasons, there's no doubt that the taser seven is better than the taser two. I don't think there's any doubt, I think we can all acknowledge that. The problem is, is that the program that Exxon is selling is, is that something that, and it's expensive. You can buy this taser seven for nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, over the life of that five years or whatnot, you're paying six thousand dollars for that taser. Of course, you're getting cartridges, you're getting holsters, you know. My, my point is, is that would how much cheaper would it be to do your own training, buy your, buy your own device, cartridges, targets? And I mean, as far as the liability insurance, I mean, risk pool represents us for those kinds of pieces, there's no reason to pay somebody else because we're already paying risk pool. And so it's, it's not a case of how we talking about a product, I think we can all agree on that. But if we purchase this product, you want to purchase it on the Exxon's bundle, I think, that they call it, bundle program, it pays six thousand dollars over the life of five years? Or do we do an analysis to see what it would cost to simply buy those, buy the cartridges, get a, get a certified trainer within the department to take care of the annual training and do it that way? And I'm suggesting that, uh, that we acknowledge the fact that taser seven is better, and that we ask Michael to sit down and do the research necessary to compare Exxon's proposal under that bundle to us simply buying everything ourselves and, uh, doing it in-house instead of having to call an Exxon to provide that.
Well, one, my question, in this proposal, they're not coming to get it, you still have to have a training officer.
We would still have somebody that we're looking at sending to be a taser instructor, it's the training, uh, cartridges, it's the training program, it's the, the yearly certifications, it's all that stuff. We would still have somebody in-house as an instructor to provide that actual training.
And, and the nineteen hundred and fifty, that's just the taser itself?
That's the device, right?
Yeah, that's not the holster and the cradle and.
Battery, the cartridges, the taser cartridges, the training cartridges, the docking station.
Gentlemen, I can tell you a little bit, if you're paying two thousand for the device, you're not paying another four thousand for the targets, cartridges and, and, uh, you know, and for accessories to go with them, you know that. Now, if you're, if you're paying three thousand, it may be the extra thousand is worth the, the effort, but we don't know that because we don't know what the cost to buy these, buy the cartridges, the targets, have the trainers in house and until that's done, that person's made, I don't think we are ready to do anything.
If you can clarify, Commissioners, and, and maybe there's some confusion, I was talking with the lawyers, you're not paying them for liability insurance, I, I don't want to clarify that.
That's probably correct.
I'm, I'm saying that for them, that's what they have done in the past with officers.
When their device comes in.
When their device is falling within the warranty and you're not extending on past life expectancy, you're not doing all that, that's what I mean, but I, that this is not included, that's, I'm not saying that you're paying for insurance, I don't want to put that as an extra cost.
So if we didn't buy the bundle package, they wouldn't stand behind it for taser services?
They would, if you're buying it, you don't have to buy it yourself. The bundle package is, is basically its payment plan, please would call it, because it's paying, instead of the upfront cost, you're paying over five years.
Excuse me, you're paying six thousand over five years for a two thousand dollar device? So what are you paying the extra four thousand for?
Because you gotta pay for the docking station, you gotta pay for the, um, the tasers, the holster, the cartridges, the non-conductive targets that they come with.
And I don't, which on squad, but that's not four thousand dollars, it's, you're not spending that additional four thousand.
Every cartridge is forty dollars alone.
Nevertheless, you're not spending four thousand over five years for this, and that's not what you're paying, I knew this.
Again, I, I can't speak for the Hancock County budget on it, I don't know if it's become a product or something, what, what they're covering for us and the services.
What I would speak in regards to the, the tasers themselves, I know that you referenced six thousand, I actually did the multiple on it. It doesn't, it doesn't work out to be six thousand a taser, uh, got it right back here, it was. I did the multiple on exactly that to see how much we're paying per taser, or what that worked out to be. Yeah, it was forty-five, uh, four thousand five hundred and forty-nine. And, uh, I think, uh, Lieutenant Shepherd also wanted to speak from the jail on that.
Good morning Commissioners, how you doing? I appreciate that you're going to be, uh, including us in this proposal. Uh, from a jail perspective, we have two tasers up at the jail right now. On this issue to me, on this issue to Paul, it's a turnover item for each one of our supervisors, so, uh, whoever's the sergeant on duty, it's their taser. We do have a, a precious specialist that you guys just hired, they're gonna be assisting you with home searches. It'd be really nice to have another taser certified fellow out with me instead of just taking both tasers and for jail, remaining with none. Uh, the X, uh, the X two that we're using, the spread, uh, for longer distances is better, uh, for short, in close, uh, taser, it's not as good, uh, the, the taser sevens are much better, especially for the jail, where we're dealing with closer, uh, issues. And again, this is a, a de-escalation device from my perspective under the jail, not going tasing people left and right up there, using it as a compliance device. And so whatever you guys decide, uh, from a jail perspective, just keep us in the loop, because I think this would be a better, uh, device to have, especially at the jail.
And I can't speak for the other two, Shepherd, we're, A, if we're gonna buy tasers, it's gonna be the taser seven. B, it's going to include you with whatever sufficient number you believe is necessary. So, I mean, don't, don't be concerned about that, it will be included and you will be hopefully very satisfied once we make a decision on what we're gonna buy and how we're gonna buy it.
Very good.
I could use a taser right now.
Well, we all get one so well.
So for me, for me, the only answer, what I need from that information is, uh, is this a lease? If it isn't, this is a financing plan, right? So what would it cost if we did it now? Because my opinion, we should be doing it all now because of our buck and taking the burden off the county taxpayer. So for me, I would just like, I, I'm not questioning my mouth, I'm not questioning who's getting them, I'm not questioning the, the, you know, the model or the equipment that you need. To me, you know, my taser, you need a battering, you need a docking station, and you have a weight area. So to me, it's just, what's the cost? What's the true cost that we're gonna write the check in? That there is a good case for, uh, sole source, sounds like there is, but it just needs to be in a memo so that we have something to hang, hang our hat on if somebody were to question, uh, you know, state, you know, our fiduciary responsibility. And people are starting to question that, I mean, I got, that's one of the reasons, I, I don't wanna go back to cars, but that's the reason why my most wants to go through the purchasing policy. Because I have been hearing some chatter from other folks and, and that letter, you know, just, um, reinforced, so I, I, you know, nobody here is trying to pull the wool over anybody that I can see.
Well, Paul, can you talk to the, talk to this salesman? There is no, there's no calling of scale, there's no savings, you're paying bulk now as opposed to paying over five-year period. You're gonna pay twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-two cents a year, five years, or you can pay a hundred and forty-five, five ninety-three sixty, which is the sum.
No one's talking about a discount if we buy it all now.
Well, I, I'd like to ask that question, that's all.
Right, I think that's.
Well, I have, and there is no discount. Well, it's, they're not charging you interest for five years, they're not charging you additional, it's just a hundred and forty-five dollars divided by five years equals payments. So it's, it's a, it's not a lease, it's a payment, if you don't want to pay the four hundred and forty-five.
So my point is, as a business person, I would rather have present value of those than, than, you know, thirty thousand a year. I just wanna ask the question, I, that's all.
What, what's the question?
The question is, should be discounted if you pay it all.
And it, it should be if they were charging you interest or they were charging you more per year if you want to fight it, they're not charging you anything. They're taking the full cost of the five-year program, a hundred and forty-five thousand,
And doing it five years.
One-fifth a year, and they're not charging you.
That's what's in this proposal, I'd just like to ask the question, I don't know, maybe the answer is no.
And there it is right there in, in their proposal. It's, it's in the, in the information and it's approved by the salesman yesterday.
Well, it is in that proposal, and the dates are in that proposal, but my question is, we pay it now, is there any?
And the answer is no, and the answer is no, Paul, I asked that question, the answer is no.
And Commissioners, I mean, obviously it's not to your discretion, but if we want that answer after this next slide, you know, while the next category goes, I have no problem stepping on making a phone call to get that answer, if it is something that you wanted to vote on.
Well, there's still the issue of whether it's a lease or a purchase and whether it falls under that, that one.
I, I could add, I guess that's what I'm saying, I could also ask that and just say, hey, do we own these at the end, or is it an actual lease? If, if you wanted that information to be allowed, make a decision.
I would, I would probably, if we could know that, but if we could know the answer, that would be useful.
I mean, you, so when I tell you that I've talked within these centers, no lease program, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sending you with three eyes, Paul. I told, asked him that question, he said, we do not have a lease program, what is it, what, what do you need?
I'm just asking that, I'm not accusing.
God, now you know how I feel, I, I.
Now you know how I feel. Mr. [inaudible]. I'm, I have the floor now.
Go ahead.
That, every time we post something, you have to go do your research, but I don't see you doing that with other departments. So the comment that one of the people here made, I think that argument is justified. You know, I sit back and you, and you, I pull myself out of these conversations, because obviously you and I don't get along. But Lieutenant Dupree has, has put together these, these presentations professionally and fairly. And I don't think for you to, what I'm reading is that we're pulling the wool over your eyes or something, and you have to go behind our back, and I'll use that term again. You did it with uniforms, you, I mean, we can go on and on and on, vehicles, I mean, let's do it. I haven't seen you do that with any other department. Oh, well, so in other words, you don't trust me?
It's got to the point where I have to look at these, and this is a good.
But you're not trying to run my department, right?
You two have no idea, nor do you listen.
This, this is, so, this is embarrassing.
Totally.
Absolutely.
All right.
It just, absolutely, we need to move on here.
I was just gonna say, so can I say, can I need an answer on whether, uh, it can be used for our files?
Just look the other IT one, I think that hopefully another two weeks, we'll have it, or we'll have a feeling that we're not gonna have it, and then you'll have.
Commissioner Longback, I think you have to Lieutenant, I just have a phone call to get that answer for you, I don't know if you want to wait, but you, you should have that.
We have a question in back.
Sorry. Thank you, it was your friend from DRL Stowington again. Um, I just wanna say, I mean, you know, I understand the different things that goes on, and I just want to give more of, you know, this, let's get to the higher plane with this. I support this and any non-lethal measures that you can do. Because, I mean, in our different towns, we've had some of these standoffs and the rest of it. And I think officers say, see, we do not want to have officer shootings. Any method that we can do to support this, some people are in mental crisis. The jail, I mean, they're under siege all the time. And I would just, I understand it's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I do respect Commissioner Clark looking in the details, but I do think, we need to think of the higher thing with this. You know, we don't want to have officer-involved shootings, we don't want the district attorney and other, you know, agencies or whatever. That should be the mindset, you know, go with a more improved, you know, product. So it's more effective and safer for all parties.
So, excuse me, this, this is not five-year issue, there's no reason to look into this because this is not a lease program. This is simply a, buy this program for a hundred and forty-five thousand now, or you can finance it over five years. Now, we're not gonna finance it over five years, we have our money in hand. It's just a matter of how, what we're going to buy. And once we decide what we're going to buy, we buy the whole thing right now, so we're not talking about five years down the road. We either decide that we're going to take the bundle that Exxon is proposing, or we're going to cost out, buying those devices that sells and the equipment, the accessory equipment that's necessary, and if that's substantial savings, we'll do that. And that can be done next meeting. Once that, that, we have Michael to simply do the comparison on those two scenarios. And it's a bulk purchase at the time that you make the purchase, it's not a five-year plan, so we don't need kidding.
So I just may be able to clarify some of this, I spoke to, uh, Gabriel Cruz, who's the salesman on this. He said that the upfront cost is just, it's that one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three, there's no discounts. That's just the total cost of the program. He said the benefit of the program is you save about twenty-one percent, um, by doing the program as opposed to piecemealing it, like you had suggested. Um, the other benefit of this is that you kind of, you get ahead of inflation if things are to go up in price over the next five years. And it is, it is a purchase, not a lease, like you.
And so whatever we purchase, whether it's the bundle or we purchase individually, we can do that now.
Correct.
So all I'm asking is, is that Michael simply review information, some kind of comparison. Michael, do you understand the comparison I'm asking? Is that something you think you can, can do?
Well, I mean, I think obviously I'd have to have discussions or in-depth discussions with the actual supplier, because I
Oh, yes.
I don't have all that information, I mean, I literally don't want to have it.
So the question was whether or not we just purchased all this stuff separately?
Right, I would just like to.
So Gabriel just addressed that with me, he said because of this program, you're saving about twenty-one percent per unit.
Would you like to know if that's true or not, just a sales fiction? Can we wait two weeks and find out if that's absolutely true?
So I, so I think the point would be, if we can get a line, more of a line item, body that shows the savings, or maybe there's something that's part of the plan that we think is superfluous and we don't need to spend the money on.
Oh, do you respect Commissioners, it's, I actually provided that, it actually even says the price unbundled, unbundled, and then it says list price because of the bundle. An example would be the taser seven certification. It says to be certified in taser, it says unbundled on page three, eighty-one eighty-nine, list price seventy-five eighty-three. So then I can.
Where are you, page?
Page three.
Oh.
So it gives an example, it says quote unbundled price, so if you were to piecemeal it on page three at the top, if the, the piecemeal price for this exact quote is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The quote list price for the bundle is the one forty-five, five nine three sixty. An example, if you go right down below, would be the certification, so you'd be able to use the taser. You can see the fourth, fifth old, uh, wording over, it says unbundled, eighty-one eighty-nine, for certification for that one. List price seventy-five eighty-three, so it's a direct example that there is a cost savings rather than piecemealing it, in addition to the old, the old, old pricing right above. Do you guys see where I'm referencing?
Yeah, I'm, I was trying to run those. Yes, and you're at the top of page three.
Yeah, top of page three, it says quote unbundled price, so if you were to piecemeal it, the quote for the bundle, and then a direct example of that would be on, for this specific item, for the certifications, unbundled eighty-one eighty-nine a person, and then bundled is the seventy-five eighty-three.
Now it comes down to, are we buying something from Exxon that we would keep ourselves if we get it in house? You know, issue, so.
Well, they're representing, no. And, and I'm sorry, are you representing? Right, I, I missed something?
I, I think that we have both, the price, whether it be piecemealed, we have the price, whether it be bundled. Um, I think that, you know, if there's any other questions, this is the, this is the tasers, the batteries, the docking stations, the training cartridges that you have to have just to be certified, the cartridges that you need in order to prepare the taser for even be able to be used, the batteries, et cetera. I mean, this is just the, the items that are required in order to make them an effective tool to be able to use.
Just a quick question, so the unbundled on there is like, like, so it's every item, so you went out.
Yeah.
So each one matches, so it's not.
Yeah, so, yeah, unbundled price is if you were to take everything individually, their individual price, and then the bundled price is the discount, which actually is even reflected on that front page where it says discount summary, the total savings, that would be because it's being bundled.
So you have another question?
Yes.
And kind of, kind of when I first thought about having seen tasers. What's here, what's the response to that? Here, ten tasers that are three years old.
Yep, so my response to that would be that those tasers are. Perfect. My response to that would be that those tasers are no longer under warranty because they've exceeded that one-year mark. Although they're still functioning right now, we have no ability to complete them, to repair them. Um, and rather than piecemeal our program, because right now what happens is, is we have one taser that operates on one, on one platform essentially. If we were to say, okay, well, we don't need that many tasers, right, because those ones are still functioning. Now we have two different platforms operating, two different types of tasers, two different abilities. And for training and certification purposes, it would be, logistically, it would make sense to feel, say, okay, well, you're gonna be trained on this one, you're gonna be trained on this one, they have different capabilities and different purposes. Um, so that is the other thing is, like I said, we would be able to get, I, I understand the grand scheme of things insignificant, but it is a monetary amount back as far as trading the money.
John, this is similar to the laptops that we bought a couple of years ago, they were refurbished, they're useless today. Problem is that contrary to what Jacobi just said, Exxon still has what they think is eighteen to twenty-four months worth of X-twos available to replace officials. I don't know for sure, it depends on how quickly they extinguish it. But anyways, at some point, some point, we're gonna be faced with having to replace those regardless of all. And if we wait two years, we're going to be taking it out of the budget. But if we buy it now, we can take it out of our, so I do support taking it out of our, and buying them now, even though we're gonna be literally throwing away, uh, what should have been tasers that would have been good for, for seven or eight more years, but they're no longer being manufactured and supported. So, and my only question is, are we spending our money more efficiently? Know what the salesman are telling us, I'd just like to have Michael take time, sit down, review the information and say, yes, we're gonna save twenty-one percent by spending a hundred and forty-five thousand right now. I, you'll get set. Just ask him to put it off for two weeks and give Michael a chance to do that.
So, I'm not opposed to that. What, uh, what I, but I had a couple of questions. First is, you had stated that they were, I giving us some credit for the.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah.
For all of them?
For, for all of our tasers that we can.
Not each?
Not for all.
For the useful ones, right?
Yes, yeah, it's just the, my answer is, there's just the ones that are currently company.
Yeah. So, and then, uh, and then the difference between the one forty-five and the one fifty-seven is eight percent, not twenty-one, so I don't know what he's talking about, that twenty-one.
Well, I think he kind of equates it to the span of the five-year because of inflation.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I think that we should get those answers. Kind of like when we already got something now. But I would be prepared with the information that, you know, the analysis that I would be prepared at the next meeting.
Personally, I'm gonna say.
But, Michael.
I, I think just, Michael, my thought is that, that Sheriff's Fireman and Michael just sit down, do this analysis and. Yep. And then. We won't have that as, argue.
Okay, uh, the next line item was the less lethal launchers. Now, with that being said, I'm asking for the funds in order to purchase two. Um, they make a couple of different types, you know, in the quote that was provided, you can see that item four, or item two is significantly more expensive than item one. Uh, I'm requesting two of the funds to purchase two of item one. And the reasoning for that is, I think they accomplish what we're trying to do here with also the, the cost savings in mind. Quite frankly, I don't see the, the need to spend the additional funds, but I think I want to do the same purpose. Uh, with that being said, again, let's refer to Corporal Vera to explain the benefits of it. And actually, he has photographs and some examples of when they utilize them and the reason.
In all due respect, thank you very much for coming down. Another of our home citizens over there. What's the amount?
I.
Two of item number one?
Yes.
So it's two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Make your motion.
Well, I'd love to hear about it because I think it's our duty to, to do that. And, uh, I'm just gonna have a question on sole source. Because it's over twenty-five hundred, which it was under, twenty-five hundred, which is.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven hundred. But please, I'd just like, I, I think you'll do it pretty great, really.
Absolutely, Mr. Thompson. This is in twelve years, the best lesson to lie of you. Um, I mean, they're second to none of this, I have reported twice. Um, we bought them for our special response team, which I'm a part of. I've only used them on a control level and then more likely to use on a control level, multiple functions. I brought an example in. These are foam tip rounds. Anyone wants to see what they feel like, look like, I'm glad to hammer on the room with this. Um, and I've talked to Lieutenant Dupree, that's what I would recommend for the Hancock County Sheriff's Office, these blue chip rounds. Uh, in the packet, you should have the specifications. They are good up, uh, three hundred and forty-five feet per second is what they're launched at. You can shoot them within, uh, anything further than five feet back and a maximum range, effective range of a hundred and thirty-one feet. Uh, these have, I have used it twice out on the field, uh, almost identical scenarios, both intoxicated people and high on drugs, uh, threatening with knives and threatening to shoot out with law enforcement, bringing quickly into a standoff scenario. They were indicated and given orders, they failed to listen to the orders, we immediately deployed the cartridges. Um, within three to five seconds, both individuals who were completely non-compliant or offered a threatening suicide by dog or, or homicide, gave up immediately and were completely compliant, uh, a change of personalities. Um, in the packet, not the, not the, you can see the bruising, the marks that it leaves, and that's all it is.
Oh, that's, that's what, the.
Yeah.
I thought that was the injury from the taser.
That is, that is not a taser, that is a forty-millimeter round. My first shot was approximately twenty, twenty-five yards away, kept a nice safe distance from a guy with a knife. Uh, my second shot, I used a blue tip round, um, and I was, uh, a gentleman on top of the staircase that threatened his parents with a butcher, a family butcher knives and refused to come down to us, uh, and within five seconds, both individuals gave up. Um, it is a game-changing device that allows, now again, it's not used for individuals that have firearms. Uh, we've never pulled this out of this of blunt objects or suicidal people, standoffs, things like that. It allows law enforcement to stay up to a hundred and thirty-one feet away. Uh, use a less, less lethal device is very accurate. And all times I've used it, they've given up instantly. I, I cannot reach enough, the second time I used it, I messaged my administrators immediately and said, we need more of these, uh, changes personalities very quick. So I cannot stress the importance of these, uh, that I, and the use of force, if you can use a baton on a person, you can use these on a person. No difference between the use of force, it is just an impact weapon, foam tip and that's it. That's all, so I have a projectile. It's, it's the best law of use of law enforcement by far. And, and it's turned very potentially deadly situations into compliant subjects that gave up instantly.
Okay, so my question is, uh, because we're twenty-five hundred dollars. Why is this, uh, why is this sole source?
So this is a sole source simply due to the fact that this is a vendor that we currently use for firearms, ammunition and other, um, weapon services for the sheriff's office. It's who we, um, purchase our, our equipment through. Um, this is who we obtained a quote from and, uh, this is the, the only one that I'm, while I'm sure there's others that offer this, that I'm aware of. Because this is who we do business with, as a county, this is who we have done business with in the past.
So that doesn't mean, no, matter of sole source.
Other than that, I don't have a better.
Is there any, is there any other, um, extensive cost to supply or?
So the only thing, um, obviously the, the rounds themselves have a cost. Um, they, that would be, um, item number three on that list. So, uh, those are individual costs, I mean, we'd have to, uh, purchase something for the purpose of certification or training, but other than that, really would be needed to replace them upon use of that.
You made two separate purchases on one and one, would that get you away?
Well, that we're, we're skirting it. Do you have someone else? I, I know. Would it be a big, would it be a big deal to go through the purchasing policy and get a couple of prices, prices on this? Just so that we're consistent?
I can, I mean, we can put it out, honestly, I have some, who else I can get a hold from.
So I, I, I'm gonna. Okay, so, I would say, so you take this one, so. Well, I, I, I'd like to put it, I'd just say, I'm not moving, uh, uh, move to approve the purchase of two forty, forty millimeter less lethal shotguns and related supplies. And, and that purchase be routed through the county purchasing policy. That way, we're less than yet, it's just what the amount is and, and probably gonna be.
I mean, obviously it wouldn't be more than the amount, so we, we at least have an idea of that, of that looks like.
With that, Michael, with that innocent compliance.
Clarification, I guess, my first, Dan, when you say the question, when you say to authorize the purchase, I mean.
That's true.
The purchase, all, so would then have them come back to you and give you, so would.
How about a tableless item?
I mean, if they came back with a couple, and, and we can talk on this second, but let's say they came back with two other quotes, or, or they come back and say, you know what, we researched this, we haven't, I mean, that's probably a better example, researched this, this is the best product on market, so many departments across the United States use them. Then you have something to have your hat on, because at the end of the day, the government is gonna be back in your.
Yeah, that'd be great, so I'm gonna move the table as I, here's why. For those same reasons. In a memo, you say, I got three other quotes and this is the best one, or I tried to get other quotes and I didn't get them, so there, and then that's in a memo. Somebody hang out head on, like somebody said, how come you're giving all of this to this person?
If he came back and says, well, yeah, there are two or three other suppliers up here, well, that, that, I mean, maybe you have to look at it, so. You may want to be careful about saying he has to come back with a good price too, because then are you now circumventing your process? I'm just trying to stay with what you're framing your question.
I know, just trying to.
Why don't.
I wish we had dealt with that policy.
Why don't I meet with administrative property and just come up with something that we think fits?
That's right, so that's why I'm gonna move the table aside. Favor. Uh, was it seconded?
I did.
But I support this, I think, I wouldn't want to, if I want, I think, I think this is a way to de-escalate a lot of things. There's been a, it's a rare.
So you're making motions and then not, you're not fully voting once you're making it. Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
He seconded it.
Okay.
And we vote.
Okay, same with the one previous to that on the Exxon. You, you just said, we're gonna table it for now, but you didn't.
No, we did not take formal action.
Okay, okay. On this one, you did move to call a vote. Thank you, so thank you. Thank you.
Be back. Yeah, no, somebody's gotta keep us.
Back the, uh, motion.
Move, move the table aside of the future, man.
Which, which way?
Uh, E, permission to purchase two forty-millimeter less than lethal shotgun.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have a vote on the Exxon.
Uh, uh, would it, you want me to go back? I, I would make the same motion if you, you'd like that, okay, I'm gonna make the same motion. Move the table aside of the future.
Second.
Thank you.
For those in favor.
Aye. Thank you.
No, I'd like to, uh, table item A to the discussion.
So, what's your matter? Well, I'm, I'm concerned that, that, um, there are gonna be guidelines, guidelines down. It is pertinent to this. Yeah, this isn't really that, this is a vendor thing, which, again, as I've spent many years, I really worry about sending this out, stung with higher pricing, uh, based on, I'll just say right now, the last delivery probably would be one fifty-seven per gallon. It's just astronomical, and so that's why, that's my basis for this.
I'm not sure why you want to continue this way, why are we dealing with this?
Uh, until, uh, uh, County Administrator A, good procedures and requirements policy is discussed. Unless you're ready to do this.
Well, I think you represent, what, what we can accept is a sole source provider. In other words, we've got a provider, we have the years, providing a good service, giving us great.
Yes, and that's the same, same argument I make, yes. Yeah, but here's why I think this fits within that, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong. My guess is we arrived at Dead River at the time through some RFP process. Yes, that's right. Okay, so here all we'd be doing is moving them to an automatic renewal. Exactly. Until such time that we think we need to go on to RFP. And I tell you, my eye is on this, this price and the industry prices throughout the East Coast on a very regular basis. And if it were ever even likely, you know, getting the best deal possible, I would take. And you would go to RFP, so in, in my opinion, we're fine with that and it's consistent with the law, but, Michael, do you agree?
I mean, at the end of the day, you're the one making the determination on what fits into that and what's consistent with your policy. So if you can articulate specific reasons why, your decision is what it is, that's what you're gonna be standing behind. And then you need to have consistency with that. Obviously, if somebody else came in with a similar thing, which in this case wouldn't apply, because he'd be the same guy coming back again. But if somebody else came in, then you'd have to, again, give that same type of evaluation that you did this time, and if it's a fit. We, one of the things I'm gonna say briefly in a minute, I don't expect to spend a lot of time, because that has been a long reason, but is that I think it would help to refine our policy a little bit at some point in the report, in the future, so that you maybe can have some general criteria that you might look at. Not just for your sake, but also for department, so they can say, this would fit on the sole source, maybe this would, and kind of.
Yeah, because he's questioning it out. Yeah, because he's questioning it out. Yes, so, but here's why I'm comfortable doing it now, because, and I wasn't here, it's just, my guess is that you went through some RFP, some process at the time that we can hang a hang a hat on.
Yes.
And that we will do that again at such time that you feel that we need.
It's necessary, yeah.
When did, when did we bid this last time?
I wanna say twenty nineteen, maybe twenty eighteen.
It's been five or six years now.
And sometimes there's danger in doing that prematurely.
It is a razor's edge, I, you know, that there's a time for fresh blood, we all acknowledge that.
Yeah.
But I, and then there's a time when you throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak.
Does our, does our renewal lock us in on a price then?
It's a, it's a, it's a price formula, not a price.
Oh, okay.
So this is based on the Fort Bellevue, uh, eastern seaboard propane distribution cost.
Okay, okay.
And 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 what we could do is if.
We four eight cents over that cost.
So and if 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 it ever got to a time where got to be something different.
If we see drastic changes in their formula, we have to take action.
Yes, so I'm gonna move to approve changing the current propane contract. Kathleen?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's all right. Just briefly, you know, the towns are running into this also too, because you know, some things we're either sole sourcing or services, because, yeah, if I got lawnmowers or long cemeteries or somebody doing it, you know, they're only gonna service what we buy from them. Or they've only got so much staff and that they can do. So it's got to be more vendor customer orientated now. But I mean, some things that we do go out to bid for, big big projects or something like that, we follow that. But you know, that whole platform now is changing.
Yes.
If you're not a customer or something like that, they don't want to either deal with it because they don't have the capacity and what you need, so.
And it's all their way at this time. The engine swings.
Yeah, no, I I understand that, but the 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 actual the law is specific to counties. So you have a little more latitude than we do, but here's where I think we have a lot.
You work with a legislator, you need to give that change, because that's not the reality anymore, unfortunately.
That's what we talked about in our staff department head being, and that's what I was gonna recommend with this later on. It's basically the same thing, is that the time's come to try to see if there's more flexibility. But I will say in terms of flexibility as well, just a note for the record, I gave you the statute and I also gave you eighteen twenty five B, which governs how the state processes goes. Go how they go through their purchasing as well, which is referenced in that. And they have a waiver provision in there that kind of breaks it down. And one of the waivers that they have that applies to the state, it basically says requirements competitive bidding may be waived by the director of the Bureau of General Services Plan. And they give several things, but one of the things that it states for the state, I mean, is uh, it appears to be in the best interest of the state to negotiate for procurement of controlling products. So, I mean, the state, even the state guidelines that were referenced to us by one of our attorney also kind of it spelled out in the state's procurement process, not ours. Well, we don't, ours isn't very concrete in terms of what's.
Yeah, it's not specific.
So what we can and can't, I mean, again, that's something we need to look at, and potentially.
We could incorporate it into our policy, potentially, yeah.
I see. So in other words, it's good for the state, it's good for the county.
Well, that's not what I said. Uh, was that? I did, so I gotta stop. So I'm gonna move to approve changing the current propane contractor with Dead River Oil Company to an automatic renewal. And that's what you're requesting.
That's exactly it.
Second, those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Senator. That'd be the mighty waters here, but I agree with you on.
Sorry, you got jail budget transfers.
Uh, you have those in front of you. See, this is, as requested, I went through the jail expenses and uh, looked at these items that the Department Six could absorb and give a little bit of relief on the cap in the jail, I don't know. I sent it out to Monica and Tammy, and they both thought, I guess it seems to be appropriate, and maybe there's more, but we haven't discovered that. Doesn't leave a lot left.
So I I did not prepare anything on this, because I was assuming that you would be coming to us with a budget transfer sheet for us to approve if we thought this was a good plan.
Right, and and if you do, we'll.
This isn't, this isn't budget transfer, this is, this is moving the expense, this is just moving the cost.
Where you're charging it to is basically, where you're instructing them to charge it to.
And this isn't anything we've already paid for, this is future expenses.
Right.
So what are you saying is, in the future, from date, this date forward to the rest of the year, he can transfer, he can take care of sixty three thousand dollars worth of jail expenses from his, if we approve that. And so the jail can have more money to hire staff.
It's gonna be pro rata, I guess, exactly.
It's allowing, it's basically allowing Dennis to may perhaps overspend some of his loans. But it's, there there's no, there's not.
No transfer, I would just assume jail expenses. Okay, so I want to just build county building expenses.
So, I mean.
Do we need action?
I don't think we even need action. At this point, I don't believe so, but if, depending on how you wanna look at this, I think I could come back with another clearer representation of this concern, because I think some of this is gonna be the same conversation we're gonna have with the other items earlier, or one item earlier, to where the money's coming from. I mean, there are certain requirements that when you built your budget, you, that's what it is, and when it's been approved, it's approved. Then there's also certain things that the commissioners can do at certain times. So those really would be what I'd have to bring back to you, so that you can see what those requirements are. But at this point, I guess, the question is, is this the concept that you had in mind for moving forward? And if so, the official mechanism to make that happen is either just finances charging it to those accounts, and at the end of the year, you you address when you can or cannot, and then you go from there. But I do wanna caution, this doesn't mean that we're giving the jail all that much more money, that's just helping fill that gap. We're not giving the jail anything else, because the jails are spent as it is right now, we're bound by law, and then the the resources that we're needing right now are, we're gonna be in the same spot we were last year. Don't have enough money to pay for keeping the jail, but we have to keep the jail, so what are you doing?
Well, the purpose, when you first stated this, was to allow people to hire additional staff, but they.
He he wanted to think about making up to that, but the reality is, it's still not it's still not changing the net position. I mean, their budget is still right now, Monica, what is it, they, you've already just released May's payment, or?
I've just given them uh, their their May payment.
So this sixty three is not gonna go through with.
I mean, at the end of the day, realistically, realistically, no, but that would just fill that gap, so that if you have a larger gap down the road.
Which we will.
It it's gonna make it smaller, it's too big, because I mean, I know that was the intent, but the reality is looking at the, I mean, I I can't accurately sit in front of you and make you leave with the opinion that that's really what you're doing.
And you developed your budget for next year, though.
Oh, most certainly, that's gonna.
Could, you could make more specific allowances for a winfall.
Truth of the matter is that we probably shouldn't do this along kind of the road, right?
Possibly.
We, I mean, we've had a deficit for several loans here, so.
In the years that I'm told, I was not here, the years I'm told where you didn't take advantage of the full amount, obviously those would have been great to have had now. And I mean, the state has just passed a budget, but how much we ultimately get still doesn't cover what we need, so.
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 Yeah, I I do too. I functionally, this is not gonna solve the problem, but it helps.
Band aid.
Yeah.
So uh, we'll put together uh, maybe some something for approval next, next week.
We'll come back with more information.
Take your your class of.
Whether or not it's approval or not, I won't say that at this point.
Just a policy change or directive, whatever, however it's communicated.
I mean, I I I was thinking, well, my general consensus is, we're asking you to cover as many of the costs as you can, to save.
Right, and I've identified several there.
All you need.
Okay, I'm good with that.
If you're getting their question then.
All right, my one, my one question, this is not gonna be a case of at the end of the year, we haven't spent all the money, because we don't, we want don't you still have to show in your budget that you need that money by what you spend?
Oh, well, we'll do that.
Yeah.
My point, and so we're not gonna end up having, saying, well, you didn't need, you don't need as much money, because you didn't spend it.
But I hope on January first, the budget, this will show us, maybe we can put that extra person in, when we show this this moved into the other budget. That's so, as you prepare next year, make that allowance for sure.
I guess.
Uh, jail plumbing, I'm still having two out of three keys are in place. And uh, splitting it up, we thought would be convenient, but it hasn't proven to be so. So we're still looking at, we've got the the cost for the new pictures uh, for providing electric service to the new pictures. I'm waiting to hear back from our vendor, Mr. Swamy, to be held today, to give us the cost and the board. So I apologize for the delay, but we hit his head. It's a woman like mine all over. All right, so that's about all, okay. Yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
You too. District Attorney.
If I were you, I would beg on my hands and knees, Michael, put you up.
Well, he did, he came in. You didn't come in right after we started, did you?
Yeah.
Did you really?
Actually, one minute.
Sorry.
I've only got one. Rachel Hicks.
So I'm gonna move to approve hiring Rachel Hicks as full-time legal secretary at a pay rate of six A, as you request.
Perfect, well.
Monday.
Monday. So it's gonna be Saturday, twenty seven.
Yeah.
Four twenty seven.
April twenty seven, August twenty twenty.
I'll work these stats on Saturday. In case you're interested, call that Sunday for.
Okay, so you want me to reread it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm move to approve hiring Rachel Hicks as a full-time legal secretary at a pay rate of six A, April twenty seven, twenty twenty four.
What's in the motion? Those in favor?
Hi.
Right. Welcome.
Thank you.
You.
Really not to kind of be this into the dirt, kind of touch on, but the reality, a couple of different things. One, we have several different policies that um, we've discussed before that that we need to look at and probably update or even get rid of that where they no longer apply. So I think going forward at some point, that I should get to have presenting one or two a month or whatever, having to look at, see if they're relevant, or whether there needs to be some record and change. But one that has come up is obviously the bid procedures and requirements, and and a couple of different reasons. One, um we had this discussion with our attorney Peter Martezi, when we're talking about our contracts with help as well. You can reference the statute and and our bid policy that we have. And then as part of that, obviously, is is just even recently with all the offers, potential approvals and everything else. We know we have a lot of different things that are coming in for your consideration. The statute, I'll read real quick, it says, any contract for construction, renovation, improvement, county buildings or facilities involving a total cost of twenty five hundred dollars or more must be awarded by a system of competitive bidding. Except for purchases through the state, the county commissioner shall make purchases over twenty five hundred dollars of service supplies, materials, equipment needed by the county or any department or agency of the county by competitive bidding. And then it does at the angle and talk about that uh expenditures of ten thousand dollar last may be accepted by a lawful proposal fit. So then that takes us back to the county's policy, and if you look at it, does provide some procedures and stuff here, but it doesn't really, as we discussed, I mean, it probably could be beat up a little bit with some better definitions in terms of what sole source and all that. I'll say that I did meet with department heads or an department head meeting last week, and kind of mentioned this to them again. I I I think in a perfect world, as we go forward, as you did today, you you just have to be able to articulate the reason behind the sole source, and and I've kind of instructed department heads to present that information to you in advance, so you don't have to spend a lot of time at the meeting. I mean, if there's reasons why they can articulate it, then put that in the memo that they send to you, saying I view this to be sole source because of X, Y, and Z. If they haven't been able to do that, or haven't really considered that, they just said this is the vendor that we've used, then that gets them to start thinking about, okay, well, I can't just rely on that response. Doesn't mean that it's not a truly legitimate thing, it's just, again, being able to respond to the public when asked, the reasons behind uh, certain expenditures and and trying to apply with the law. As we stated a couple of minutes ago, I do think this is one of the items I I know that the delegation, at least one or two of the representatives, will stop in and say, what do the commissioners want this year? So this year, going forward for the next session, I'm I'm trying to put together a a different list of items that we would like them to try to target, and potentially if there's specific language, obviously, we bring that back and talk about it. But this is another one where the, it's not as easy as black and white. And a lot of things have changed just even recent years since the pandemic. But the law is the law, what's there, there, I mean, you're aware of it, I'm bringing it back to make sure that that we're all on the same page with that, and to say that I think that there is potentially areas where we should look at, where this could be uh, beat up a little bit to clarify, especially in those exceptions, uh, or areas where you have to justify certain actions that we have something laid out. Am I trying to be difficult or create obstacles or barriers for them? No. That's in the legislation, but the intent behind the legislation is obviously to get the best bang for the buck, which I know is what all of you try to do every time you have something rough before you. So the reality is, you know, in some cases, I think maybe we use common sense to, you know, decide that ultimately by making this decision, it's the most cost effective for the county. Technically, black and white here says this, but again, can you articulate a reason behind the decision, I think, probably in the beginning statement? And then from there, doesn't need all these other thresholds.
So for me, I read state law, I went, you know, and I, in other words, I read the material he gave us and I read our policy, and not sure they're consistent, I mean, they're close to consistent, but so first task would be, you know, to work on updating that and making it consistent. As far as talking to the delegate, speaking with the delegation, I think that needs to be done, I think that threshold that municipalities are using for dollar amounts is certainly changing, twenty five hundred dollars, just we had an example of it today, it's not sufficient. You know, I think most, well, the ones that I know of are using double that, five thousand. I also think that there needs to be uh, in in that legislation, just like there is a state portion of it, not the county portion of it, there are certain, there's instances where they can deviate from the policy, I think we need that latitude. You know, somehow, I don't, I I don't mean willy nilly, I mean, similar to what they have. And to me, those are the two layers.
My question is, does it always have to be a a bid process necessarily, or can it just be uh, getting price quotes from other companies? Does it always have to be this sealed bid process?
No, in fact, I think that's counterproductive. And 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 makes it that we, there's a lot of formalities around.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, a department head, especially on on, you know, things that are, you know, under.
I'm looking at payroll software, and I have price quotes from four different companies.
Yeah.
To me, that should be.
Yes, and 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 municipality that I'm used to, there's there's a threshold dollar amount for that. I don't recall what it is, but I think it's probably twenty or fifty thousand dollars, where above that, you you have to go up to a formal bidding process.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like, uh, so that might be another one that I didn't think of, Michael, that that could be in there, because because I really don't have that. So that might be another one that I didn't think of, Michael, that, that could be in there because, because I really don't have that last.
It's not expressly stated. I mean, the, the other part of this is, does by default, can the county. Use some of these bid procedures things with the state? I would say you're on shaky ground, whereas if you are able to include that in your policy. And we obviously did have a quick review of that, then we might be able to build in that flexibility. But right now, the way I see it and what they're, I, I, I agree, I don't think there's any flexibility technically. The way that we have our policy structure right now and the way that. The specific statute of references is happening, but when you look at the procurement process, unless we started hopping on board with the state all the time.
That's right.
It doesn't give you as much.
Okay, but so, and then I also think that, you know, when requests come, you know, from departments. Having it in writing with stated reason gives us, you know, that way when somebody questions something or writes a letter about something and says.
It's a trail.
Yeah, this is trail. So that's perfect. So. I was just going to. Make a motion or request of county administrator's office. Work on updating and refining the county's purchasing policy to ensure that it's consistent with app, applicable state law. Period, and then. I think you could, if you, when you come across things. That. You know, we could put in our policy that the law allows us to do, I think that should be there, like. Exactly what Monica said, you know, if you. If somebody goes, you know, if, if, if the sheriff's department came back with. Free prices. Those were effectively called bids, you know, for smaller dollar amount of things. But right now, it is too many fees. So is that my motion?
Yeah, I don't even know if you need a motion, I mean, I understand if you want to go with it, I think that's the directive.
Okay, so if, if we don't need action, Mr. Sheriff.
Unless you have something specific.
Oh, yes, uh, but. I can tell you that. Given the department, it's already listed, well, it's listed for three bids, it's a slip.
I'd say oral.
Oh, I think that was, that was Monica's question. Can, can oral, you know, it's like.
It's not, I mean, they're not oral bids, they're quotes from.
Yeah.
As opposed to a sealed bid.
Well, I guess it's the same difference.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's, it's like. How do you defend yourself against an action from a vendor who said, which is he talked to so and so, and then he told, told the second one what so and so bid and he got a lower bid for it, you know what I'm saying? And it would end up written quotes, but it was as a result of impersonally soliciting, though, discussing that with, with a potential vendor. I just think that's a, that can be, that can be back quite soon.
I don't know, I've just, I'm, I understand these wants, but I'm just trying to get to a point where if somebody questions something, they've got something hanging, hanging out, that's all.
But, and that's exactly my point, is that. By allowing the department yet to well, solicit even written quotes individually from vendors. It's difficult to justify if one complains that he. Discussed previous.
Well, and maybe there's a threshold there or something, because I, I mean, I, I just can't imagine going up to sealed bid for. Fifteen hundred dollar item or, excuse me, a twenty five hundred dollar.
And I think that's one of the issues that I'd like to see something a higher value. But you know, we had a situation here recently where we solicited bids for a pickup truck. And through specifications, they come in higher than we felt was comfortable, we rejected the bids. And so we said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna recognize these specs anymore. What we're gonna do is we're gonna give you a certain amount of money, while you can buy all you can for that amount of money. And there's no way we're gonna, bid policy is, is that in there, but that wasn't a bad way to end that situation. And I'm just saying that, Michael, is, is that too fat fetched to try to? In other words, if we comply first time around and we're not comfortable, can we devise something as an alternative to the. Construction bid process like that?
I think that's part of what we're gonna try to see.
Yeah.
How much latitude we have that's based on those two statutes. So i- in other words, just like the other stuff, if, if some of these cases you can waive certain things or other things like that. I think ideally, that's, I think, the direction we want to go by saying, you know, first we'll do competitive bidding by the X process. But if the bids are non-agreeable, then can we go to essentially this next option? And I can't say to you a hundred percent, if you read the statute, you'll say it needs to be competitively bid, what does that mean? And then that's where the, they come in with, well, take a look at what the state has under eighteen twenty five B to explain how the process. But it doesn't necessarily specifically say. That applies directly to the county, it talks about the state process, so. I guess the question's gonna be is how much latitude we have. I can't tell you that answer a hundred percent, but I know that I think with all this in terms of having ability to have waivers, not all the other things, I think is where you'd like to be at. Not to completely undermine the process, that's not the intent, just we'd be in those circumstances where. It, it, it didn't work, or it makes more sense for the county, you have that flexibility and latitude to do it. And have your hat, be able to have something to hang on.
And I, I guess I, what I, I, I guess for me, it's a little bit of a misunderstanding because I'm not, if I'm looking at, um, software companies for payroll. I'm not necessarily looking at who's the cheaper deal, I'm looking at what the services are that they're providing. Whether it's, whether it's a good buy for the county, but whether it's a good buy for what we need. So I don't, I don't know if.
And you're right, Michael, because even the state, what do they call it?
Is there an exception there where?
Uh, best value bidder is what, is, is the same thing.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not the cost, but it's, it's the best value, so, you know, that's just what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I think most of what we do put out. Yeah, include some type of language, not as necessarily as clear as that big as a big thing. You do get to make fun of it. Doesn't have to be just based on price. But if you're gonna do that, you need to be able, again, to support the rationale behind what you're doing.
And unless I missed it.
In the motion.
Unless I missed it, I didn't see some, a good explanation or examples for what sole source would be.
That, I mean. In our policy, there really isn't.
Now, I wonder if that can be corporate, to give department heads and us some guidance as to whether or not this meets the criteria.
And that's what I think definitely one of the areas that needs to be updated.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, that's, I mean, there's a lot of models.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely things that you can do, and I think even to the degree, and again, state procedure kind of makes reference to it as well, so I think there's ways to accomplish that, so.
Maybe, it's like the old saying, I can't define the geography, but I know it when I see it, you know what I mean? It's like sole source, sometimes I can't really define it, but I know it when I see it. I think there's cocaine issues in any landscape, this is a good example of why it's sole source, but I mean, you get that into policy.
Right.
Well, and, and to the degree of specificity, I mean, we probably won't be able to clearly do it. I think at some point you have to take a look at what. What your criteria is, different examples, then really look at the intent of what you brought here to do, which is to have the boarding responsibility of the financial operations of the county and be able to say. We believe this is the best option for the county and, and why, and you know what, prove us wrong. You know, this is the reality we're at. All right, well, I think they did have an idea where, where we're.
You don't need any action.
I, I don't need anything specific, if you're not gonna involve anything specific other than just tell me to try to update this. Okay, thank you.
So I, uh, next on the, this teamsters M O U. Um, the schedule change for tenants, uh, obviously staying here, everything tenant, I'll, I'll also let this do it for the. So that being said, I know that there was. Prior discussions, you know, prior to today. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to read that. So if you have any questions, I am more than happy to. Or I can simply speak to it. I don't know if, uh.
Uh, you know, we don't have any, I don't have a question, I have a, a situation I'd like to discuss, I'd like to discuss with Michael. And that has to do with, and Michael's giving you this now, it has to do with the present. Union contract with regards to finding the schedule for the tenants. And it appears that, at least in, I have that Michael handing that in, the last two contracts. Have an error by omission. In that they didn't include the fourth week of a twenty eight day rotation for the, uh, tenants. In the contract. And if you look at what Michael is handing now and whatnot to the. You look at the present language. And compare that with, oh, now, in the proposed language, I did make some recommendations to clarify this, but. The. Issue as I see it is, is that in the present language. And now I have stopped at following one day off at the last sentence. It should have been a semicolon, and then it should have said. Followed by five consecutive eight and a half hour days, which would have been. Another Monday from Friday night shift. So the present union contract. I think it was just a, and Michael, do you took a back and found it in the two last?
So now sixteen was the only other one that, that I went back and looked at, but that one and the last one and then this one. So basically the last three is.
So the last three have the same language.
That, that sheriff. Sheriff doesn't have purview over this schedule, that's something.
Sure, but once that is, that's still negotiated by the union and in the contract, once there has been an agreement as to what that's going to be. And this is contractual language in the union contract, and it's for. It's one of, everybody, everybody in there, their schedule is immortalized in that contract. And so, and my point is, is that. This. There's been an error by omission in the last three contracts that. Didn't contain the last of the four weeks scheduled that the tenants presently are under. And. And I guess what I'm saying is, is that before we think about changing to something different. I think we should. Get the present language corrected and accurate so that we know what we're moving from to.
If I, I, I understand what Mr. Clark is presenting, but. I mean, I guess to speak on that, we're looking to go away from the present, so I don't know why we would bother agreeing to another one, just to then try to change it to another one. I think that, I, I'm just judging a little bit, it seems as though. Commissioner Perry, I'm not aware of my email, so I'd like to just explain that maybe a little bit.
Yeah, well, no, I, I read, okay, now that you say it's his email, then now we're good.
Okay, so.
So I have that.
Yes, um, I mean, what we are proposing is, is the, the quick version of it is twelve hour shifts. Go from a forty two and a half hour pay week to forty two hour pay week, uh, to continue the same compensation that stands currently for on-call weekends and, um, on-call during the week. So what that would look to accomplish is we keep the compensation staying the same for on-call weekends during the week. The difference that we would, uh, be proposing is instead of getting paid forty two and a half hours a week, we'd like to be paid forty two hours. Um, and in return, instead of working eight and a half hour days, uh, to work twelve hour days, what we're trying to accomplish behind that. Is currently patrol out of twenty eight day rotation works fifteen shifts, fifteen eleven hour shifts. We work depending on the month because we're in the rotation every third weekend we're on-call. So depending on that, uh, given month, there's some months where you may have one or two on-call weekends. So given, uh, any particular month or out of the twenty eight day cycle, we're working either twenty two or twenty four out of twenty eight days. What this would allow us to do by switching to what we are proposing is it would allow us to work twelve hour shifts, that's effectively fourteen out of twenty eight days. But then also you have to factor in the on-call weekend, so again, anywhere from sixteen to eighteen out of the twenty eight days, uh, or a twenty eight day rotation in comparison to patrol. Um, as I mentioned, we'd be looking to keep in the on-call compensation the same, uh, asking for any increases or anything in that regard. Um, you're simply looking for a, uh, additional time on while, uh, spend with our families. Um, the same or similarly to the rest of the patrol. This would also benefit the county in the sense of, while it's not, uh, a huge amount, but it would be an hour collectively a week that the county would not be paying us wages. Uh, in addition to that, twelve hour shifts would allow us to be, uh, more productive for a multitude of reasons. One being, you don't then spend the time to and from travel time or picking up where you left off a day prior and things like that. Uh, another reason why that would be beneficial is, you know, to have that, that we've all been talking about in multiple facets, is that quality of life and that balance between working. So with that being said, I mean, we work, uh, out of the twenty eight day cycle currently, more than any other position in the sheriff's office. We are looking to find a balance while still being able to provide the same services. There would be a tenant working Monday through Friday still, we overlap for two days a week, depending, those two days would fluctuate depending on the week. Um, to assist each other with any, uh, tasks that we're accomplishing. Those twelve hour shifts would allow us to see whole sections working during that day, and it would allow us to, uh, flexibility to. As we have done currently, to shift from either days to nights to, uh, different needs of patrol or staffing as it allows. And it would also allow us to be working during our busiest hours, um, for call to assist the deputies, uh, as needed. So for those reasons, um, that is what we are proposing. I understand that will probably be some further discussion regarding that.
I'm not sure, like, since I don't really understand, I mean, I don't quite understand. You guys do, how it all works, scheduling and everything, but. I was curious, like, so how would this be affecting the overtime rate? I just wasn't sure, since you've, since you've talked about looking at fourteen hour work week sometimes.
So, yeah, when I was looking at scheduling, um, my understanding is there's a federal law that basically requires enforcement schedules. And that, don't quote me on this, but my understanding is this is a federal law that, uh, requires enforcement schedules to fall within a seven, fourteen, twenty one, twenty eight day cycle. For example, they can't, you can't have your, can't do a five on for, a five on for, a five on for, except twenty seven days. So it has to fit within those for, I think payroll purposes is probably my assumption. Um, so unlike, I know the dispatch center, I believe they have a work week where they get, they might work four, six hours and get paid six hours of overtime. Then the other week they get paid thirty six hours of straight time or something like that.
Built-in overtime.
Yeah, we are not asking for built-in overtime, these would be straight, uh, hours of pay, this is how, uh, the rest of the sheriff's office is compensated. As far as wages, our patrol, uh, gets paid forty one and a quarter hours a week, and that's all straight time. We, we get paid forty two and a half currently at straight time, we'd be looking, uh, under this proposed schedule, we'd be going down to forty two hours straight time.
Excuse me, back up. You're incorrect in your assumption of seven, fourteen, twenty, whatever. Failure Standards Act says that everybody working over forty hours must get time and a half, that's the forty. That's essentially the ultimate, US Supreme Court decision called, uh, uh, C F versus Senate, anyways. Well, that was unworkable for governments, but they got Congress to change the Failure Standards Act so that certain occupations, you could average out that work week. Now, any, come, any schedule that repeats itself in twenty eight days or less qualifies to average out. Now, any come, any schedule that repeats itself in twenty eight days or less qualifies to average out. And so basically you can have any schedule you want, as long as it repeats itself in twenty eight days or less. The reason dispatch, R C C, again, that is that's not recognized occupation, law enforcement corrections, fine, those are the only ones that are recognized. You P, you two are part of law enforcement and you can come up with any schedule you want, no matter how erratic, as long as it repeats itself in twenty eight days or less and falls within the guidelines of a seven K exemption. So you're not bound to any, any schedule that complies with seven, fourteen, twenty, one, twenty. Okay? Now, in the existing schedule and the traditional schedule, when called for tenants to be working two weeks, days, Monday through Friday, the third week was Tuesdays for Saturday nights, and the fourth week was Monday through Friday nights, and you start over again. Is that what you guys have been working?
So what we have been working is we've been working, uh, exactly as the contract specifies. So as the wording of the contract, we've been, uh, I will say that instead of, we've been doing, uh, Monday through Friday and eight and a half hour days, uh, to equilibrate that forty two and a half hour pay week. Um, if there has been, we've been primarily working days because much of the work that we do is in coordination with other agencies and administration networks states. With that being said, there has been instances where there has been a hole or the need for somebody to work an evening, and we have shifted our, we have the ability for the contract to shift our schedule to then fill that evening shift for those responsibilities. So we have done that where needed and when needed. Um, so, you know, that is, uh, we've worked exactly, exactly as, uh, the contract states, we've worked primarily days, yes, but we have, uh, shifted our schedules when needed to work evenings, um, to provide any additional coverage, um, and we have.
So you have followed a three-week rotation in the schedule in the contract?
We have been working Monday through Friday, eight and a half hour days, and then.
That's not what the schedule said, the schedule said you work five, eight and a half hour days followed by two days off, then you work five followed by three days off. And then you work five followed by one day, you've been working that?
Just five and two.
So you haven't been following the schedule, so, yeah, so you haven't been working schedule, and you're not working opposite each other nights, is that correct?
We are not working strictly opposite.
So.
Which the, the contract doesn't specify day or nights, it just says eight and a half hour days.
Does it say five and two, five and three, five?
Well, it does, yeah, but we're, we're basically taking one day away from that second week and adding it.
So instead of that second week where it says, you know, work five days and have three off, we've been having work five days, have two off, work five days.
Taking two days off, that's what you're doing, that's what you're doing, correct?
Correct.
So basically, why do they need a shift change following the schedule now? I knew it was good. When, if you, if you move to the new schedule, what, just out of curiosity, since like, oh, it's gonna be, I think, it's always gonna be a twelve hour shift.
Yes.
So when, when's, what's the proposal, when you should just be enough that I have?
Well, I think the, the lack of specificity in it gives us that ability to adjust it. So say if we need to cover a night shift, right, where there's a hole, if you can't fill it through overtime or what have you, then that just gives us the ability to basically work those twelve hours within the span of that day, so that way, like I said, we can do what we need to during the day if we don't have those shortfalls or cover those shifts at nighttime, if we do happen to have somebody who say calls out sick or, or we have, you know, an overtime shift that just wasn't filled, to, to fill patrol.
And if you look at, um, I understand looking at the contract is, you know, you look at patrol, it doesn't specify, it specifies or has the same wording as far as, you know, you work this many days, this many days off. It doesn't specify between day and night or the hours, simply do in the same for us. Um, but the real benefit is, is that it allows us that flexibility if there is a hole, um, rather than saying, okay, now we're gonna, you know, have to pay somebody overtime, we have the ability to shift, uh, a shift hours-wise that day to meet those needs and, uh, effectively save money while still accomplishing the same, same task at hand. Um, you know, with working those days, you, right now you have coverage Monday through Friday by lieutenant. You would still have coverage Monday through Friday by lieutenant, you would have longer days worked by the lieutenant though in return, um, which again would span over the busier call volume of the days, it would allow us to see, uh, both sections, and it would be beneficial for a multitude of reasons, both personally for our families, um, but also for the sheriff's office.
So I, I have worked it, I've never been, I've never had a twelve hour shift, I used to tense a lot, two, four tents.
I have sixty.
So far.
But, um, I guess I'm a little worried, like, to me, like, it's a recipe for burn, some burnout too. If you're always working twelves and whether you're really more productive, and now you get the idea of the driving and setting up and everything, but you know, somewhere in that, like, you know, nine hour time period, I'm kind of questioning how productive.
So can I speak a little bit? Um, so my response to that would be is that, uh, I understand burnout is a rough thing. The reason why we're proposing a schedule was because quite frankly, we're, we're burned out right now because of the amount of days off. We would both much rather work a longer day and have more days off to spend with our family and personal time than the amount of days that we're working that year. Uh, you know, we look at other agencies and what they're working for ship times. Uh, our patrol is working, you know, eleven, granted, that is one hour, effectively they're on road, the road per ten. They have, always have the potential to work longer, you know, upwards of, you know, twelve, fourteen, whatever hours that ship takes them. Um, we'll get other agencies such as Bank, where they don't, they work straight elevens. Um, there are other agencies that do work twelves, it is, uh, Roosted County, they work twelves. Um, it is, uh, we, Osscar switched to some crazy schedule variation and they're working on the ships. Um, but, you know, there are a handful of police agencies that do work twelves, um, because they, that balance of, okay, yeah, you do have a long shift. But the, the reason to do that is in regards to that burnout because those guys prefer the extra days off.
Ever since, I mean, forever, you've had, since you've had the tenants and whatnot, it's never been a good schedule for the tenant that was good for the operation. If it was good for the tenants, it wasn't for the operation and vice versa. We've recognized that, we didn't know how to solve that, but we did, I mean, last year we added another page rate in recognition of what that is and whatnot. But there's a big difference here. If you had R C C switching to twelve hour shifts, you have a dispatcher sitting in front of a terminal. And every time the phone rings, he's gotta answer it, every time the radio cracks, he's gotta answer it and so on, so he is devoted to that station for twelve hours. If you've got a corrections officer, he's up close, and he's, he's that destination. We have now a, a physician who has no obligation as far as what comes before them, except in the risks. And you have a situation where, I don't know what shift over here, seven to seven, six to six, but you have the, the situation where you have had a, a position of, say, whatnot, is three meal breaks within the twelve hour period. And I, I challenge, I question whether or not you're really going to get twelve hours of productivity when you add those twelve hours together and whatnot, as opposed to stringing that out for an extra day and only making us gain a ton. And so I, I really don't, and the other problem is too, is that they both want to work days, no more nights, as a scheduled night. Now, right now, at least before these took, took over, there was a lieutenant working nights, five nights every week. Now, here we are at a time where we're asking for more people because we don't have enough to answer complaints, and they have just taken source of help on the night shift, off the night shift, leaving the existing sergeant and patrolman to handle the cost at the benefit of having a lieutenant to help back him up on complaints. And I understand, I've been listening to it for years and whatnot, the tenants' complaint and chagrin over this schedule. But if we approve this, we are going to make things a lot better for the two tenants, and it's going to be worse for the operation.
What, what I would say regards to those twelve hour shifts is dispatch does work twelve hour shifts, and I believe, I know some of the jail staff does as well. Um, and when they're extended, they work eighteen, so, um, you know, twelve hours is not, twelve hour shift is not new to the county. Um, in regards to these meal breaks, we don't, they, I mean, we don't really take meal breaks like a average worker does. Um, and as far as all that goes, I mean, the, the twelve hour shifts are, I mean, it, uh, would allow us, like I said, the benefits, it puts us working, um, during the, this is call volumes, it puts us, um, working with multiple crews and sections. I think that there is a multitude of reasons, um, to support it. In addition to that, you know, you had mentioned burnout, obviously that is a concern of ours, that is why we are proposing this, because we are burnt out from what we're currently doing. Also draw your attention to the neighboring agencies, if you look at, um, if you look at Washington County, Osscar County, Waldo County, the lieutenants of those sheriff's offices, they don't work nights. The reason for that is because they do much of the same work that we do as lieutenants here, and a lot of that is in conjunction with other agencies, other vendors or whatnot that operate during the daytime hours. So yes, you could have a lieutenant work nights like they did in the past. But in all honesty, out of those last three lieutenants prior to us, two of them complained about how they hated the schedule, there was one that didn't necessarily hate it. That's why primarily there hasn't been a change because the two lieutenants working at the same time weren't not able to come to a schedule agreement. We have, and that's why we're presenting it here today, because we're both advocating for the same thing, and it allows us to do our jobs. Um, it allows us to meet the needs of the agency and effectively serve those needs. Um, you know, the M O U that was presented to you guys was signed off by the sheriff because he also feels that it meets the needs of the agency. So I think that what we're proposing certainly allows us, uh, the flexibility to address the agency's needs.
Sure, good. Yeah, I was just gonna say that since I've been sheriff, I've, I've run this by the lieutenants and said, listen, this, this, uh, schedule that you work is a killer. And, uh, those aren't my words, that's my cardiologist's words. And my cardiologist, I spoke to him yesterday knowing this was on the agenda and saying, would you be willing to come explain to this why this is? He absolutely said he would do that, short notice, I didn't ask him, but that is coming from a, a, a hot specialist of years and years and years, and going back to the quality of life, these, they deserve some time off too. And they have the flexibility to move that schedule around and work their twelve hours in there. If, for example, they have to go later in the night, they can admit in moontime, work until midnight, whatever. And, and Dakota's right, the jail, they get forced to eighteen's. So to, to give them the benefit of a healthier schedule, uh, where they can be more productive, I mean, it's no brainer.
So, I mean, I, it's your, it's your guys, it's your, your baby.
Yeah.
And I understand, so, um, one thing I would kind of think you might consider when you're looking at it, since you've got the four, three, three, four, is that the person that's got the three, four that week has tendency to come in a little bit later than, uh, the other one, because so, so you, you're, you're kind of getting the whack at maybe in there a couple of hours past, uh, the other lieutenant, but you also are only gonna be working three days that week instead of showing up. I know, so one of the things I think, like, as a dad, you know, like, well, if I come in at work at seven in the morning and I go home at seven, I, well, I've missed the whole day, you might, I mean, there's nothing left, I'm not gonna see the kid. Uh, I'm not gonna be there to make breakfast in the morning before the kid goes to school, and I can be able to pretty much come to bed by the time night, well, then at almost eight o'clock. So like, that part of the quality of life really smell like great, because you're not really home, like, those three days, four days, you're just like, gone, you don't exist. Maybe that is, maybe that's the way it is now.
Well, and that's part of the reason for this, is to put it in context a little bit, so, you know, if you look at the schedule that we're working right now, we'll work Monday through Friday. Let's say that's my on-call weekend, right, and I, I have to go out and handle it. Now I'm working Saturday, Sunday, now I start another Monday through Friday again, so I would much, personally, my family and myself, and I think I can speak for lieutenant actually as well, we'd much rather that than effectively potentially have to work twelve days in a row because I can tell you my wife hates that personally, so, mine are those two.
So, right now, the schedule you're working, there's a, there is a night shift for the tenant?
It's not specified.
Okay.
Because we have the ability.
So there's no change, this does not change what's happening now, right? Okay, that's.
No, we're, we're simply looking to change the average of the, the, the days that we work, we wanna work four twelves instead of the, the eight and a halves, and in return, obviously, it brings us from getting paid forty two and a half hours a week to forty two.
So my feeling is this, this is what the sheriffs matter, the reason why it's an ally is because you need, you need our signature on this, and if sheriff is up here saying, and you're up here saying that there's no degradation in services, I, 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 I'm not about to question, so, and I haven't, I haven't heard the sheriff say that or you say that. I, I signed off on it.
Yeah, that's my point. So, uh, we, we're trying, what even means, nights and days, but traditionism, and.
Can, we just need to stop citing tradition altogether.
Why not?
I mean, especially when it comes to the health and wellbeing of the people that serve the community. It really, it really is clear that you have no regard for the people that work in the sheriff's office and their health and wellbeing or their family needs. I mean, you just continue to cite tr- tradition when culture has evolved since you have been sheriff and things have moved, and like he said, the previous lieutenant, which is a close personal friend of yours, was the only reason that schedule wasn't changed. Because he didn't wanna change it, because it benefited him, he was a self-serving leader.
If you look at tradition and how, what is effective, let's look at the other agencies, let's take this personally, let's look at the other agencies. All those lieutenants work days for that reason. I'm not asking to put in there that I strictly work days, I want the flexibility that we've continued to have. That way, if there is a need at night, I'll shift my schedule, we've done that. We're, we're not above that, we're just simply looking for our hours to change so that we can better, uh, do our, do our, do our purposes and our, complete our tasks that we.